Good evening and welcome to the August sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Yep. Thank you. Sorry for that, folks. We had a little technical difficulty. I'd like to call this meeting of the August sixth, two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting to Order is now seven oh two. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by W A C A T V and live stream on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. In the event of a disruption, broadcasting will continue on W A C A T V and live streamed on Facebook. So good morning, good evening, everyone, and welcome. At this time, we had a seven o'clock appointment. Martin Pillsbury from M A P C has a presentation on hazardous mitigation plan for the town. So, Martin, why don't you come on up with your with your presentation and your associates that are with you in the audience? Good evening. Thank you for being here and for all the work that you folks have done to get this started.
Thank you for having us tonight. So I'm here tonight to present a draft of the town's new FEMA natural hazards mitigation plan. We were here about five or six months ago while we were in the middle of the process to let folks know that this was ongoing and that we were, you know, the the plan would be done and folks could have an opportunity to review it. So now we're to the point with great with the great work of your local team and Chief Roby is here tonight, who was, you know, the sort of the leader of that team. We have pulled together a plan that addresses the hazards in your community and what kinds of things the town can do to ameliorate the impacts of natural hazards, to mitigate those impacts. And so I have a PowerPoint presentation if I can get this going. Yeah, so a brief presentation will give covers a little bit of on the background of hazard mitigation planning. It's part of a FEMA process. We'll talk about that. And then the process of putting the plan together, how that was done in the town, who was involved. And then we'll have a little bit of an overview of a few of the high points of what's in the plan and then have an opportunity for questions from the board and others. So just a brief background on hazard mitigation planning. This is part of a national program under under a federal law originally called the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, which set in place a new pro what was then a new program for FEMA to implement plans across the country at the state, county, and local level to address before disasters happen, what can communities do to reduce the harm that they that that these natural events might cause. You can't stop the storms from coming, but you might be able to get a little more out of harms way in by the kinds of policies and programs that a community can adopt. And so that's kind of like the basic idea behind that federal act. FEMA set out guidelines for what should be in these plans. And because it's FEMA, it's it's a little bit technical and has a lot of very specific requirements. So we're structuring the plan to hopefully meet all of those requirements. There's a five year, a goal at least of a five year recycle cycle of renewing these plans because conditions change, technology changes over time. And so this is actually a plan renewal from the town's previous plan. And actually, M A P C, and I should have started with the introduction, I suppose Martin Pillsbury from M A P C Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We we helped the town put together your previous plan, in fact, the one before that. This is the third go around because this isn't every roughly every five years. It's been not quite five years. But so this plan will put a new face on this kind of planning for the town, update it to current conditions and give you a kind of a roadmap of activities and recommended actions that you can take over the next five plus years. So what do we mean by hazard mitigation? Well, that red that green box at the top, reducing impacts from natural hazards through strategies that include policies, programs, and projects. So hazard mitigation isn't one thing. It's a kind of a cluster of different kinds of activities that attacks the problem from different facets. And we'll see from looking at your plan what some of those actions are. And I'm seeing at the bottom of the screen is being cut off here. I don't know if I can do anything to. Is that helping? Yes. Okay. So the kind of things that we ask to set a framework to do with planet is to first understand what actions the community is already taking. Because floods and winter storms and all of these hazards are something you've lived with for decades. And it's not as if you haven't been doing anything. You've been doing a lot. But in order to get a sense for what's the baseline of what you're doing now first, then we can identify from there. Where are the gaps and where are the areas that could be updated and made more robust? And that's kind of what this plan will focus. So one of the things we've looked at in more recent plans, this probably wasn't the case ten or fifteen years ago, is is the relationship between natural hazard planning and climate change because we now have a lot more information through different kinds of climate models, temperatures and rainfall. For the coastal communities, we have sea level rise models. We can now start to think about the same natural hazards that we talk about, intense precipitation and high winds. They are also the subject matter that we look at often in climate change. And climate chase isn't really an impact in and of itself. It's just a process that's making some of these already existing hazards more exacerbates them, makes them more makes them happen more frequently or more intensely. So we want to be aware of that because in the past, these plans might have been conducted in a way that you assumed your past history was an indication of what your future would be. If we had these kind of floods and rainstorms in the past forty years, we have a good record of actual empirical information. We could sort of project ahead, oh, okay, we're going to have to continue to live with that. What we're seeing from the climate data and the trends and the actual experience is that those trends from the past are ramping up even more. And so it just means that some of these trends are actually even more important to think about because they're liable liable to be more intense in the future. So what are some of the techniques? It looks like I have to move this up. What are some of the techniques that we talk about under? I said hazard mitigation is not one thing. So here's an example of several categories of activities and processes that can be put to use for helping a community mitigate natural hazards. There's a whole section of activities that fall into the category of prevention, planning and zoning. This is kind of what I call keeping out of harms way, like where the development goes and what conditions it is in relation to where the known hazard areas are, flood areas and other things of that sort. Property protection, recognizing that, you know, communities have have been building for many decades in certain places that we now know to be hazardous, but maybe it wasn't even known fifty or a hundred years ago. And and we have to figure out the best way to continue to coexist with our already existing development in areas that we now know oppose hazards. Public education, and so it's not all just about physical projects and physical infrastructure. It's also the public understanding of these hazards for their own good, for the properties they own and manage or where they live, for local businesses as well as residents, et cetera. So public education is important part of this. Natural resources protection is looking at the functions, the things like wetlands and watersheds can do to help us buffer the impacts as long as we keep those intact and keep them, you know, the the functions of those natural wetlands as well as we can. This is the category I call, you know, letting mother nature do some of the work for us if we stay out of her way. And so that's where something like, you know, in a town level, the activities that something like a planning and conservation can help making sure you're regulating and protecting those areas. And they can serve those functions for you, which actually can be a cost reduction for you when these events do happen. Then there are structural projects, and there's a lot of focus on these because you do have infrastructure, a lot of it in these plans is around stormwater infrastructure. But it could be other kinds of infrastructure too. And the the infrastructure that almost every community has is in need of certain kinds of upgrades. It's it's a lot of it's older. A lot of it was designed for the storms of the past and not the storms we're getting now and in the future, just the sizing and how much flow they're designed to handle. Or they are decades old and they need to be upgraded. So that's these are the kind of projects that plan looks at and makes some recommendations for what some of the higher priority ones where those improvements could happen. These are some of the bigger ticket cost items, these projects compared to some of the other things we've talked about here. There are some grants available to help communities handle some of those costs, although it's it's not perfect. There's definitely going to be some costs I think the town will be looking at over time itself as well for part of this. The last item here, emergency service protection. This is the idea that we want to make sure that the facilities and the functions that the town has in place that enables it to respond to the public and protect the public, that those facilities themselves aren't the first ones to go out. We've had cases in other towns where the police station flooded and the communications equipment was in the basement. And then they were like blindsided and they weren't able to help. While there's a flood going on, the rest of the community needs more help. They were hampered. And so it's the idea of keeping making sure you really prioritize that those functions are resilient, that they will be able to weather the storm literally and be able to continue to provide service for the rest of the community. So those are some of the major kinds of things you would see in in a hazard mitigation plan. We'll we'll talk about some examples in 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 a minute, right here in Ashland. The process for putting the plan together. So this is just a brief timeline of all the major steps we took. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but it's just to give you an idea. We're all on the right side here, second to the last step in the process in having the second public meeting. I mentioned we were here in the first public meeting back six months ago while we were in the middle of producing the plan. And what you see through here are four different meetings of the local team that have occurred over since last summer. And that has really been how the plan has been built. All the local knowledge that comes from the different department heads and different staff, they've been very helpful. They've been come forward and really provided lots of good information to make the the plan very town specific, to make it very rich with local information and data. So that's the process we're in. There's only one remaining step after this. The plan will go once it's completed, this public review process, it will be submitted to me and we'll talk about that. So a few examples of what's in the plan, some of the content. There's a lot of maps in this plan. I'm going to show one example here. It's hard to read it at this scale. But a lot of the things that pertain to natural hazards are mapped in this plan. All the areas that are known flooding and drainage problems from the sources we got from most largely from public works, for instance, are mapped here site by site. The areas of town that might be subject to brush fire and forest fire because of open lands. You might see some of those red circles and again, the fire department helped, you know, point us to where those areas of concern would be. So those are a couple of examples of known hazard areas locally. The FEMA flood maps are also on this map. Those are the official flood maps. But we know that towns have flooding issues and drainage issues even beyond those official FEMA flood issues. And so that's why we have the locally designed maps as well. A number of sites that you can see listed on the left were identified for for flooding. And also we have mapped on here all the critical infrastructure and critical facilities in in town. So you can see things like public safety and fire police, nursing homes, this building right here, everything that's critical to the town. And then other kinds of critical facilities are on this list, which are, I would call, facilities that don't provide assistance, but that might require assistance. So that's why you see like nursing homes or maybe there would be daycare centers or schools where the populations might be vulnerable or may be in in the event of a disaster. The town will be wants to be aware of where there might be needs to be served as well as where the facilities are. So there's a wide range of things on that inventory. Everything that's inventoried that's listed out in the plan is also mapped in a map like this, which I'm sorry you can't see it in detail at this scale, but it's a very detailed map. When you look at the plan itself, and I hope you get a chance to do that, you'll be able to look at these maps in detail. And so, you know, what we look at in assessing what the risks are to the town, and this is not fitting the page exactly right, the risk assessment. We start by looking at the state hazards and and even federal agencies like U S Geological Service and NOAA. And then we bring it down to through the team's participation locally, how these hazards affect the town specifically. So this is a plan to deal with natural hazards, not other kinds of hazards, not human caused, not not like say chemical spills or radiological hazards, but every type of natural hazard that could occur in the town, even those that have a very low probability of occurring, like earthquakes. But they're all included in the plan and and given some treatment. Those hazards that are more common, like flooding, receive a lot more focus and a lot more treatment. But we cover a wide range of different kinds of hazards in this plan.
Mr. Pillsbury, can I take a quick question?
Sure.
When you when you refer to natural, you know, incidences, would beavers be considered natural?
Yeah.
Because they have.
You'll see in a minute, beavers are actually on this list. Absolutely, they are. They are a natural. Yeah, because they they exacerbate flooding, among other things. That's the main reason why we would put them in there. And you will see they are part of this. So the risk assessment, we look at, here's an example of a map on the left. That's a statewide wildfire risk map showing the degree of risk for wildfires. In this part of eastern Massachusetts, it's a moderate level and you're going to have a lot more risk when you go out in western Mass and there's a lot more open forest land and that sort of thing. And other parts of the country, obviously, like California and Colorado have an even much higher risk. So in the scheme of things, but this gives an idea of the relative risk. And I just want to mention that like some of these hazards, it's not a high risk, but it's still a risk. And so we we don't ignore it. It's in the plan. The same is true with earthquakes. Drought has been on people's minds since two thousand and sixteen. We've had four droughts. And two thousand and sixteen itself, the first of that series was a really big one, biggest one we had since the early eighties. And so these are maps that show how the state's drought management task force has classified and different parts of the state at different degrees of drought. And you'll see that even as small a state as Massachusetts, there could be a difference between the the state of drought in eastern Mass, the coastal areas, central Mass, western Mass, like it varies widely. So the data that's available is pretty fine grained to be able to say, okay, around the Charles River and the Suezco, et cetera, in eastern Mass, we're in a drought. Down on the Cape, they're not or vice versa or whatever. So the data is pretty interesting.
Excuse me, I just have a question about this. Is is the risk of wildfire related more to drought than it is to some other factors? It seemed to me a little counterintuitive that wildfires were a greater risk here than they are in the western part of the state where it's heavily forested, right?
It's a really good question. So the risk of wildfire, and the chief can probably talk about more of this because he thinks about this more than I do. It's partly what what's the what's the vegetation you have? How vulnerable is that to being, is it pine? Is it shrub, different things? How old is it? How well is it that wood locked and managed or not, thin, undergrowth or not, all of those kind of factors? And on top of that, very important is drought. Because whatever the hazard is in general in that site, if there's drought, you make the hazard go up, no matter what the starting point is. Because it's it's kind of intuitive. If it dries out, that vegetation is going to be much more likely to burn and it's going to be much harder to control that fire if it gets started. So drought is critical. It's it's not as if we never have a fire, you know, if we're not in a drought, but we're much more likely to have that threat. And we did see that the droughts of the last few years, there were incrementally a lot more wildfires a year and a half ago during the drought. I heard that over six thousand acres in Massachusetts burned that last drought we had, which is was, I think, a historical high. So it's clearly interrelated very much so. And that's a good example of how one hazard affects another. Absolutely true. So the other thing we did, we we actually had a community wide online survey and asked folks to let us know what their personal experience with different kinds of natural hazards are, what their concerns are. These are, these are, this will be summarized more in detail than the plan, but this is like a a quick overview of the some of the kind of responses that we actually got from the survey. People talking about how they 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 experienced flooding and other kinds of hazards, specific events were sometimes mentioned. So that puts a little bit more local and individual flavor on all of this. It's one thing to have all this data and to say, oh, yeah, the data tells us that. But like local folks are telling us by experience, yes, what we're experiencing, these are the concerns we have. So how did the plan get put together? What was the plan development process? Well, as I mentioned, we had the the team was at the core of it. The team met four times over the last year, roughly quarterly meetings. And we went through this process you see here of looking through updating the data from the last plan, reassessing the mitigation measures that had been in your previous plan to see which of those had been actually implemented and which had not yet. And of those that were not yet implemented, we all asked, okay, do we want to continue to carry that into this new plan? Is it still an important measure? Just because it didn't get implemented before, that doesn't mean it's not important. It means that there's just a long list of a lot of things to do. Many of them are by nature long term. So you're always going to be carrying over some mitigation measures from one plan to the next when you have a five year update. So we did carry some over, but we also, as a team, looked at the current hazards and the threats in the community and added a lot of new measures to this plan that were not in the last plan. And I'm going to show you some examples of those in a minute. So this is like the process of all the data that went into feeding the plan locally. And so transitioning from the last plan to this one, sort of some high level summaries. Fifteen of the mitigation measures from the two thousand and seventeen plan that were carried were carried over into this new plan, most of which actually were partially completed, were like long term projects that were in in mid progress. One only one mitigation measure from the previous plan was not carried through. I can't remember exactly which one it was, but once in a while, people will say on second thought, seven years later, whatever it is, it's it's not that important. Or what maybe sometimes it's just maybe something that's been done, it's completed. And then fifteen new mitigation measures were added to this plan that did not exist in your last plan. And we're going to have a quick list of what this what this looked like. Now, I'm not going to read these all off. There's there's a lot here. I put them onto two different slides, but people can look at this. They're in the plan, obviously, in more detail, and they're described in the plan. But just to, I'll just read a few off just for examples, you know, looking about how to retrofit town properties with stormwater control measures, item two, that's one of the key issues for managing stormwater. Supporting the designing, construction and. Supporting the design and construction and removal of the Sudbury River dams was one of the issues that came up. And looking at number seven, evaluating contributing factors to cyanobacteria growth that has been affecting some of the ponds lately, reservoirs lately. And by the way, you've probably heard on the news, this is all the way down the Charles River, the same thing. So this is kind of unfortunately a region-wide problem. A few other examples on here, on the second page here...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just wanted to shout out, number six caught my eye. And I think we had downplayed a little bit earlier, like, the whole earthquake thing, but I think a lot of folks at home, I mean, know that over the past, really even like two years, earthquake activity in the northeast has really started picking up. There was just another earthquake last week centered in New Jersey, and I've felt tremors more recently. So I think that, you know, number six is actually very important going forward because I think as we see this activity go, continue, it sounds like there may be a good chance of more earthquake activity in this region.
Right, yeah. That's a great observation. And it's true that earthquakes often get short shrift in these plans because they haven't happened historically to at least severely around this region, but they do happen at a, you know, a level one and a half or two or two and a half magnitude. It's not impossible. We get a, we get a big one here. Geologists tell us we're overdue to maybe actually get a big one in the northeast. There was a pretty big one in 17-something, the colonial era, off of Cape Anne, that they said was strong enough that it shook, that it broke China, it broke the china and the shelves in Beacon Hill in the colonial era. So that just gives you, I mean, it's anecdotal, they didn't have seismic measures. You have to always remember earthquakes are on a geologic time scale. 1700-something was yesterday in terms of geologic, like, you know, we could have one. The probability that it's a really big one like a California is very low, it's not zero. All right? And if it does happen, we're much less prepared for it here in this part of the country because we have not really planned for this. So it's a good point. It's a good example of why we include these in the plan, even if it seems like it's a low problem. Absolutely. And I kind of wanted to mention, on here somewhere, there was something on beavers, because it was mentioned before, I'm trying to remember where it is. Do we test it? Was on the previous one? Yeah, number three. Measures for beaver control, including flow control devices, decoy dams, and developing a beaver management plan overall. So, yeah, absolutely right, one of the priorities in the plan. And this is a new measure that wasn't in your last plan. There's been this kind of activity going on that's been accelerating, so that's one reason why the team wants to make sure that is covered in this plan. So all of these are new measures. Again, I'm not going to spend time going over each one, but you can see the flavor of the different kinds and the different categories of hazards they address. Final steps for completing this plan, we're now officially in a public review period. The draft plan is posted online. There's a link there to where people can download and see the actual whole plan, which is over 150 pages. So there's a lot more detail than I could possibly give you in a short presentation here of the plan. So we really invite folks to take a look at, you don't have to read the whole 150 pages, but we agree, sort of invite folks to take a look in a little more detail what's in the plan and how all these hazards are documented, and more importantly, what steps is recommended in this plan for the town to take. It is kind of a roadmap for actions that you can take over the next five or so years, and that's kind of what it's intended to do. We have set up a special email inbox, ashlandresilience@mapc.org, for anyone who wants to send a comment or a question on the plan. And we'll document all those. In the final version, we're also going to be documenting any comments we get and putting them right in the plan and what kinds of responses the team might have to those. We also had the survey that I mentioned, and it's still live. And through the next few weeks, while we're reviewing the plan, folks are still welcome to come in and add to that survey. There's the link to it right up there, and there's also a QR code to go into. It's a pretty simple survey. It doesn't take too long, and we try to make it user-friendly. Shouldn't be more than five or 10 minutes at most. And so what will happen after we do, what we'll do is actually have this plan available and invite comments for the next month. We'll be asking for folks to send any comments to us by September 5th, right after the Labor Day weekend. And then we'll round up all the comments and we'll do a final version of the draft, and that's what will be submitted to MEMA and FEMA. So at that point, the plan will get reviewed by MEMA first and then by FEMA. They have these long, complicated plan guidelines, checklists, and say, the plan should have A, B, C, D, up to Z. And they'll be sort of putting it through the mill and letting us know, you know, you've got everything right except these three points, and they'll probably come back with a few revisions, kind of like their job. And so whatever revisions or edits they might, either one of them, MEMA or FEMA, might ask where we'll, of course, we'll make a revised version if need be, resubmit those. Once they're happy with the content of the plan and think it meets all of the requirements, that's when the plan will come back to this board for you to then just take a vote to adopt the final plan. They want to see that this plan isn't just a good idea that's in someone's shelf, but that the leadership of the town is aware of it and endorses it and says, yes, this is the plan we want to follow, not unlike how you would get a master planner, an open space planner, at the end of a planning process and say, okay, now we speak for the town officially, this body. So you'll see a very, a few months from now, when it goes through all this review, you'll see a very simple one-page certificate of adoption. It's one of these hereby, you know, we hereby adopt the plan sort of thing. So that's what would come back to you. So we wanted to make sure you were aware of what this plan is. You're going to come back, it'll come back to ask you to vote on it eventually. And so we welcome, obviously, your comments as well as anyone in the town, in the public, while we have this open for a comment. And then we'll be into that last phase of just giving the MEMA, FEMA review and coming back to you for final...
Martin, how long will the process take for MEMA and FEMA?
MEMA and FEMA is a little unpredictable.
Okay.
Okay? MEMA happens first, they're sequential, they're not, you know, and MEMA happens first, they usually happen a little faster. Our experience, we've done a number of these plans, and it can vary because where, how staffing levels are in these agencies and what else they're doing. I would say in general, MEMA's reviews are in the four to six weeks range. And then we may have to make a revision and turn something around and turn it back to them. That then would go to FEMA. FEMA's review can take a bit longer, although not always. It's the more unpredictable of the two. I've seen FEMA turn things around in 30 days. I've seen FEMA take 60 to 90 days. You just, you kind of never know with FEMA. And things are a little bit up and in in FEMA in general these days because they've had some cuts and et cetera. So we just don't know for sure. So I think you, just to be on the safe side, you can assume this will go into the fall and be towards getting near the end of the calendar year before it goes through all of those processes. It could always happen faster, but I wouldn't...
Now, this doesn't, this doesn't take a town meeting vote on this, right? This is just our votes, the select board vote? Okay.
That's right. Right, so that's the thing I should have mentioned at the beginning. I mean, one of the big incentives here to do this plan and get it actually approved by FEMA is that that makes the town eligible for some FEMA grants to do implementation projects, drainage projects and other things of that sort. The bad news is, one of those big grant programs that FEMA runs has recently been cut. The BRIC program it's called, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. The maybe-good news is, I just heard yesterday, a federal court has put the kibosh on cutting it temporarily. So like a lot of these other programs, other people are rising up. In fact, Massachusetts and 19 other states, 20 states, entered this lawsuit against it. We had in Massachusetts on that national grant, over $50 million worth of projects that got clawed back when they cut that program. And so there's a lot at stake. These 20 states are trying to go to bat to keep that program whole, so we'll see. It's, at least they're fighting for it, so we'll see.
I'll open up the board for any questions or comments you may have, Martin, at this point. Yes, Yolanda?
Martin, thank you. MAPC is a great partner for communities like ours and other communities in the state for all the work that you do and help us with these kind of projects, so thank you for that. I did, in, you know, reading through the new things, there were, as you said, some things that hadn't been there before, so that was good to see. I don't have any questions. I think it's a very thorough plan. And as always, I think the important part is that we do it, and certainly that our public safety team has worked with you to create this. And as we know that things are changing, so even though this is a five-year plan, we may encounter something in two or three years that we can't even plan for, so...
That's right.
But thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Bren.
So thank you. That was, this is a great, I think this is really good for our town. I think this is going to be helpful for us in the future, especially, we're in the middle of a master planning process right now, and I, you know, this question is much, probably more to Michael, but we should, there's some real capital things that are included in these recommendations, and we should make sure that we do have that sort of on the radar of our master plan, because I think it should all tie in. I'm curious on, you know, the, this is going to go to MEMA. How is, like, is this in line with sort of what the state is expecting? Like, are we, is everything kind of, I want to make sure, like, on a local level, we're aligned with the state?
Absolutely.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So again, here's a little more context. The state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has a hazard mitigation plan for the whole state. The FEMA program set it up so all 50 states have a state-level plan, and then they want counties and towns and cities within those states to do local plans that should mirror their state's plan.
Okay.
That list of the hazards that we cover comes out of the state plan.
Gotcha.
FEMA actually says when they review the plan, like, this local plan needs to have every hazard that your state plan has in it addressed, even if it's some are more than important than others. If you forgot to put one in there that was on the state plan, they would tell you in their review and say, please add this.
Okay.
Once in a while, that might happen. So there, it is, it's kind of, think of it as telescoping from the, from the federal policies down to having each state. And it has been a good program in the sense that it does set up some broad guidelines, but it lets each state develop their own plan for what's the condition. Think of how vastly different states are, us to California, whatever, the hazards are different, all of that. So it allows for a lot of flexibility for each state plan to meet some broad brush guidelines, but to really hone in. And then likewise, for each town and city, you know, you're not dealing with the same issues that Provincetown is with coastal erosion, right? But they're not dealing with the same issues you might be with, like, forest fires and brush fires, et cetera. So just for example.
Beavers.
Right. Or beavers, exactly. The beavers are not going to the Cape. So, whether they are, I don't know.
I wish.
So anyway, so yeah, it actually does align with, and in fact, it's even one of the requirements, in effect, that your local plan aligns with the state plan.
Okay.
And the state plan, by the way, also has to be redone every five years.
Okay.
The most recent addition was done in 2023. And between the 2018 plan, the last one before that, and this state plan, the state added a lot into their plan that's on the climate change side of things, to think about how that affects these hazards. And we actually can draw some of that data, because it's largely large-scale data. There's not like separate climate data for each town, it's more like statewide, region-wide even. So we're able to actually draw some of that information out and apply it to the local conditions.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'm going to interrupt for a quick moment. We have a 7:30 hearing that I have to read the hearing notice, and then I will ask for a suspension of that hearing until we're completed here. Notice hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing to review the Sunday entertainment license application. The applicant is Ashland Brewing LLC, EBA Clover Row Brewing Company. That's 151 Main Street, Ashland, Massachusetts. A public hearing will be held on this matter at the Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. on Wednesday, August 6th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging into Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend, the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's office, Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass., or by emailing Joe Maniani, Chair of the Select Board. So I'll ask for a motion to suspend the hearing?
Well, let's open it first.
Yeah, we got to open it. I move that we open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we suspend the hearing until we're done with other matters.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Far be it for me to stand in the way of a brewing company. That's part of the natural hazard mitigation.
And I just had one, one other kind of comment slash, more of a comment, but we should make sure that we, like, because this is going to be housed on MAPC's site, that we do a good job, like, on our website and in our communications to direct, yeah, because I think it's, it's important to add the communication.
Actually, we provided some materials, a flyer, and also social media content that can go on your, and that was to announce this meeting.
Right.
And so we could actually do just a version that takes away the meeting information, says that the plan is here, here's the link, please send comments by September, whatever. We could like just do a slight variation of that. Yeah, and then you could post on your, on your website, and more importantly, perhaps, on your social media, because that's what gets to...
Your newsletter, Michael, a couple times.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we'll just do a revision of those materials to make them all just about reviewing the plan, sending comments on the plan.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, everyone that was a part of this.
Yes, yes, thank you all. I just, you answered most of my questions, but I just had a couple. So are any of these, are there any kind of priority order for them, or is there...
Each, when you see these, they're listed here in the slide, just a list, right? But in the plan, each are given in a priority, high, medium, or low, which the team determined, based on thinking about, like, the degree of hazard that that particular measure is mitigating, and how practical it will be to actually implement it, or how costly. This, it's a little bit of a qualitative cost benefit. We didn't actually have hard-dollar cost for a lot of these things, but you're thinking about, if this is a measure that would be low-hanging fruit and easy to do, and it would solve a lot of problems, that's a high priority. If this is a measure that's a good idea but really expensive, okay, maybe it's a medium or low. But even the low, they're on the list for a reason, so like, I don't want to dismiss even the low priorities. They're all priorities for the town, it's just a degree, a range, yeah.
Is there a way to predict, or to, you know, how much funding we would get for some of these projects, based on...
Well, where, where are the costs of some of the, the actual infrastructure-type projects here? Where the cost is known, and there may have been, in some cases, some engineering initial assessments, we put those costs into the plan. So you know this drainage project might be a $300,000 project. It's only because your public works or someone in the town knows that, because they've done some preliminary study or work, or they can see this drainage project is very similar to another one we've done recently, that the cost, so ballpark, you'd have a cost estimate. There's, there's a number of them that we don't really have, a good way to quantify in the cost. For those, we put them into a high, medium, low of cost, which I believe was like under $100,000, $100,000 to $500,000, and above $500,000, or something like that, at least to give you a way to sort them that way.
And I guess my last question really is, in terms of the data, is, how recent is the data that's in the report?
It's the most recent available for what each of the, which is why these plans are supposed to be updated every five or so years, because the last plan you did, I didn't realize it was actually 2017, so obviously that was relying on data that's getting a little older now. And in refreshing this plan, we were using, if it was the same category of data, just the more recent version of it, or in some cases, new data that didn't even exist in 2017. So whatever is in here is the most recently available.
Okay, I guess I have one more question then.
Sure.
How much of a role does population or housing play in figuring out what the potential impacts are?
Well, you do want to think about, like, a given hazard, how many people might it affect? I mean, there are some hazards that are very localized. There could be a street drainage problem that floods one little neighborhood. I don't want to diminish that, it's important to that neighborhood. There could be other measures that are of a townwide scale. So we, the team takes that into account. I think that's part of where the priority setting goes. You know, is this very localized? Is it more wide-scale in terms of its benefit, its implications for the town?
Okay, thank you.
Kida.
Hey, Martin, I have one question for you, maybe a clarification. So earlier you said that the plan is about 150 pages, and it is very important that we do get citizen feedback on the plan. I was wondering if you could just provide maybe a little guidance on how folks who are watching tonight can review it most efficiently?
There is an executive summary in the plan.
Okay, great, yeah, exactly.
So they can really look at that, it gives a high level on some of the measures.
Yep.
And then there's a lot of these, when you see the plan, you see a lot of the chapters that describe the hazards. We've put a lot more graphics and like charts and things in there, so you don't have to wade through a lot of text to get the idea. So, yeah.
Just wanted to call that out. Thank you for letting folks know, because it is important that we get folks to review this, so, and get some feedback. So thank you.
Absolutely, right.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
We good? Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you to the committee out there. You guys and gals have done a fantastic job, as always.
And thanks to the team. I can't thank the team enough, and the chief's been wonderful, so the whole team, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes. No, this plan wouldn't be anything without the team. It would have just general state-level data, and it wouldn't be all that helpful.
Awesome.
This is awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay. Very informative. Now that there's an executive summary, or I used to call it clip notes. No? Come on. Tell me you never used them. Okay. I know I did. Anyway, next on the agenda, we have recognition of a young lady's retirement. So I don't know if Candy and Jan would like to come up to the podium? If you would? Would you like to preside over this? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As they make their way up to the podium, yes, in bittersweet news, Jan Borelli, an employee since the early 2000s, has decided to engage in her next chapter and has retired from the town of Ashland. And Jan has been just a remarkable presence at the community center, and a stable presence, and has been a smiling face and a support for all the staff there, but also a support for all the residents and the volunteers that come in. So without further ado, I would turn it over to Candy and Jan. Yeah.
Before we do that, we had a wonderful retirement party that was put on at the community center, and the Select Board honored you with a proclamation for your day. I mean, how many residents actually stopped and came up to you and said, hey, today's your day?
Said what, I'm sorry?
How many of your friends and coworkers came up and said, today is your day, Jan? Today is your day? You know? And I think it was the 29th, right?
Everybody was so great, yeah, it was wonderful, yeah.
We appreciate all your efforts and your work. What I'm going to miss is your friendliness, because that's what Ashland is all about. And you were the epitome of what Ashland is, and I really mean that. You, every time I walked in that building, you always had a smile on your face, and you treated everybody like a dear friend. And I hope whoever takes your place, that rubs off on them as well. I'll open it up to the board.
So I apologize, I was not able to be there at the retirement, the retirement party, but I heard, it was wonderful.
It was.
And I too wanted to say thank you for all that you've done. It's always been nice to see you when I do go to the community center, or the senior center, whatever we want to call it. So congratulations, enjoy your retirement, and if you're like a number of other people I know who are retired, you're going to be busier than when you were working. So be prepared.
Okay, yeah, it'll be good.
And congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done for Ashland.
Thank you.
I'll just echo, congratulations, and really thank you. You know, Ashland is a great place to live because of people like you. And, you know, we have a great number of employees and volunteers, and it really takes everyone to make it such a special place. And so thank you for your years of service to our community.
I'll just echo my congratulations and thanks for everything that you've done for our community, and I know Candy and the rest of the crew over at the community center will miss you dearly, and.
Miss all of them.
I think you can, you can still come back and visit. I think she'll let you back in the building, so.
Yeah, hope so. I resigned up for tax work.
Okay.
Yeah, come back and help, really, yeah.
So I just, I just hope you have an amazing retirement and enjoy.
Take that.
Take care.
Thank you all.
We good? Thank you so much again. Thank you for coming in, and we appreciate everything that you've done.
I just want to, Jan, instead of asking you what you're going to miss the most, I want to ask you, what are you looking forward to the most?
That's a good one. That's hard to say, I can't, I'm still like, where am I? What am I doing? Just having the time and energy to just do, you know, some things I've been putting off and finally have the time for, and just take my time and, you know, just enjoy, and come back and enjoy everything at that center that I've worked for for so long, and I want to be there and have fun there.
That's right.
Yeah, have, enjoy it this time.
Have fun.
Yeah, with your mother there, too.
Oh, yeah, you two will get into trouble, no doubt. I have no doubt, you and my mom.
Just have bill money ready.
All right, well, my mom will say it's time to return the favor, so, you know.
Coming back.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Jan, we'll miss you. We'll miss you. It was a nice party, and it was well-attended as well.
Oh, it was, yeah. Very, very nice, very nice. I will entertain a motion to reopen the hearing that was supposed to be at 7:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, Jamie is here, okay, great. And so this hearing, and just to remind everybody, this is for an extension of their entertainment license for Sunday entertainment, and the folks at Ashland Brewing LCC, or Clover Road Brewing Company, which is at the former Ashland Fire Station, Central Station One, is asking for Sundays as needed. And they have small musical acts inside the taproom and on the patio, and operating hours will be from 12 to 8 p.m. So Jamie, if you would like to add to that, welcome, and.
It looks like it's John.
Oh, is it John? Sorry.
It's fine, it's okay.
Under Jamie on the Zoom.
I said Jamie's name, but I didn't see the picture. Hey, John.
No, it's, I'm doing, okay, how are you guys? This is the, I've done back-to-back town meetings, not here, I was in Stowe for one a couple weeks ago, and somebody retired just before I went on for that one, too. And at both times, they said such nice things, and I feel like when I retire, they're going to say, he tried hard.
Well, that's, that's a very nice thing to say, he tried hard.
Yeah, it could be a lot worse, fair enough.
You can't say hard, that's good.
I think you nailed it. It's, I don't know why we didn't do this when we were doing our application before, but events have been well-attended, and we'd like to extend that out to Sundays, kind of here and there, certainly not every weekend, but, you know, sometimes it's nice to have music on a Sunday, or a comedy show, or whatever. We've been pumping out events, and Jess, our events coordinator, insisted, so I said, sure, thought it made sense. Here we are.
Sounds good. I'll open it up to the board for questions, so that you may have for John.
Hi, John.
Hey.
Quick question for you. First off, I think, I've been hearing some incredible things about the events and goings-on down the brewery, people very excited, so I'm glad to hear that.
Oh, thank you.
When you say "small acts," I just wanted to get an idea of scale and sound, right? So I noticed you're stopping things at eight, but like, when you say "small," what do you, could you define that a little bit more specifically for me, like, how loud, how many, like, if you can, thanks.
Sure, yeah, no, I don't know if you've been in there, it's pretty echoey. The whole entire thing is concrete, so it tends to be a person or a second person and a guitar, who really functionally can't handle much more than that without blowing out somebody's eardrums, which isn't to say that, you know, we might, we're going to do an Oktoberfest and going to do some larger events, but those are really rare and would probably be on a Sunday, and certainly wouldn't be in the evening time, just because people aren't around that.
Great, thank you. I'll also add that the volume, I'm having a little trouble hearing, the volume's a little low. I did make out your answer, so thank you, but.
Oh, sorry, I'll try to talk a little bit louder.
I don't know if it's you, but.
I just bought new, the expensive Apple earbuds, like, for the first time. I kept losing my earbuds, and I broke the bank on these ones, because they have a tracking on them, so that's a bummer. Oof, I'll talk louder.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else have, or any?
The only thing I wanted to ask, and this is a great opportunity for us to be able to have you here, because as Makita said, that, you know, I think this is the first time we've had you here since you officially opened your doors and we did the ribbon cutting. So first of all, congratulations, it's been an incredible addition to our downtown. I think it's changed the entire vibe of downtown Ashland, so it's awesome to see people sitting outside at the fire pits, and it just, it's, it's, it is a very, it's, so just congratulations, and I'm so glad that you're, you guys are here. The one thing I, the one question I did have for you was, have you gotten any feedback from anyone about, you know, like, about the entertainment? Like, has there been anyone, anything negative that you've received on your end?
Only one that came in last week that I'm a little skeptical of, but we're going to meet with them, and it wasn't entertainment. They said that, like, people are leaving beer bottles near their yard, and that doesn't actually line up with how we operate, which isn't to say, so I don't know what to make of that, but we're going to investigate and figure out what's going on. We don't sell beer, you know, we sell cans, four-packs to go, and usually it's not people grabbing a four-pack and walking down the street and drinking a beer and tossing it into somebody's house. It doesn't mean it didn't happen, but that's, I would be surprised.
Okay, sounds good.
Aside from that, with the entertainment stuff, we haven't had any negative feedback, not from a volume standpoint or anything like that.
Okay, sounds, sounds good, thank you. And, you know, it's, it's great to see all the events that you guys are hosting, it's, you know, when you first came in front of us, God, it feels like, you know, six years ago, but I know it probably, probably feels like six years to you guys, too. But, you know, you were talking about really having it be a community place, and to have the events that you guys do, and it's not, you know, obviously not just about the music and the entertainment, but it's about, you know, you know, a comedy night, or something going on, you know, that brings people in and brings people together, so just, it's, it's cool, it's a cool, it's a cool addition to downtown, so.
I appreciate that. We've got more work to do, and if you ever have an idea for an event, we're always all ears, we're spaghetti against the wall, and see what sticks.
So just, I may come and see you sometime soon, so we'll.
Oh, please do, yeah, yeah, I would love that.
So, okay, thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? No? Then I'll entertain a motion, which I can read if you'd like.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then I move that we approve the Sunday entertainment license for Clover Road Brewing, allowing Sunday entertainment between the hours of noon and 8 p.m.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's 5-0. Congratulations, sir.
Just, I have one question. So I've been seeing ads for a comedy night at 7:30.
Yeah, it's tomorrow. Yep.
But there's been no date on any of the stuff that I've seen.
Oh, come on.
Seriously.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, well, this looks like fun, but I had, there was no date.
It's one of those things that's wonderful to hear, because I have the exact person to blame for that.
Okay, but you're saying it's tomorrow?
Usually you got to figure it out.
Spoken just like a manager, I love it.
So you're saying it's tomorrow night at 7:30?
It is tomorrow night at 7:30.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to look on Instagram right now and see if I could call you a liar live.
I think I saw it on Instagram today, and I couldn't find the date.
I saw it on, I think I saw the original posting on Facebook, and I'm like, oh, this looks like really fun, but there was nowhere that told me when it was happening.
Oh, my word.
So you found it might have been like a joke, you were teasing everybody, but.
Oh, no, I see it, I see, I see an Instagram one from three days ago, which doesn't mean that they've been consistently on there, so I'll double-check that.
But it's tomorrow, August 7, at 7:30 p.m.
Yeah, those are a good time, too. And they already sold 50 tickets for it, I think I got today, so we're expecting like 75 people. It's a good, they're a good time. Usually comedians are, are great.
Well, congratulations, and as Brandy said, thank you for being here in Ashland and just adding to the great vibe in our downtown.
Oh, please, thank you, guys. Keep holding me accountable, make sure we're doing our part.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, John.
Bye.
Okay. Our 7:40 hearing has been withdrawn at the request of the petitioner. There was needed information that they failed to provide us, so they'll get back to us, and they'll meet at our next meeting in September. Oh, maybe August, second week in August, 16th, I think? No, not the 16th. Whenever our second meeting is in August, 20th? Okay. All right, so we can move right along. And with that, we'll open it up for citizens' participation, because I know Mark's biting at the bit. Good evening.
Good evening, Mark.
I beat you to it.
Say what?
I said I beat you to it. I said good evening.
Okay, wait, let me start over.
No.
Okay, I'm Sony 119 Main Street. I'm coming up with three, three things. One, was that mitigation presentation? Let's just hope, and if it does work for the state and this town, then we can just hope that the federal government dogers don't get a hold of it first, so we can be here for this town in one piece. Two would be what you just had on with the Clover Road. I live right behind it, and it's been quiet, no loud music, nothing like that, everybody's walking by, back and forth, and everything, all of this there. Plus, I do the, on the Sunday afternoons, noon to 1:30, is the peaceful protests, and we're there entertainment on the sidewalks, must they have their beverages and stuff like that? They sit up, we stand out there, and they sit out, and they sit out and watch us. Three is old story, trying hoping for a new beginning and everything else. Stronger boards, committees, I am now very, very disappointed that ZVA and CONCOM are not on the same page. I'm very disappointed about that, because the state, we talked about this before, Mr. Town Manager, and now there's a letter out there from the state that conversation was talking about, that called mass-ready from the state about housing. Housing and conservation points and bylaws and all that stuff. The state, I think now, is definitely putting small towns under. Just because we are in a housing crisis does not mean that a town can't grow with housing, with economics and business, without one or two things that's not there anyways. So we, I, we have the right to our state senators, president, and all that to say our piece, but I know that if we do what I do and everything else, it's going to get buried, and this town is not strong enough to fight back. That's why I'm majorly disappointed that it's not happening. 40Bs and the MBTA one, too, is not going to make this town economically easier to live for, it's just got to make this town more crowded, traffic, and disappointing to have other people know what Ashland is really about. And once the state keeps on burying in Ashland, Ashland is not going to come out alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Ashland has a lot of hurdles to go over, that's for sure, as do other cities and towns. We're not the only ones affected by the trickle-down effect from the federal government, so we're all feeling something at some point in time. All right. Next on our agenda is to discuss the town manager's evaluation, and I will turn this over to Yolanda.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. So the process was a little elongated this year due to a couple of different things. I don't know if you all remember, but last year we had talked about possibly trying to create a new tool that we were going to use, and due to varying things, that did not happen, so we used the same tool again this year. Everyone filled their separate evaluations out, then they were brought together. I have to admit that Michael helped me use, or Michael used ChatGPT to.
It's amazing.
Put them all together, but I feel like it, it actually created a fuller evaluation put them all together, but I feel like it, it actually created a fuller evaluation based on a lot more information. Based on that, I do have a statement for the public and for all of us regarding his evaluation process. So the select board statement regarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five board evaluation worked with Michael Herbert and myself as the past chair. Michael's overall score for the past year is four point four, which relates to meeting and exceeding expectation. This is based on the average scores of each area in the current evaluation document. There are ten areas of performance that the, the board evaluates the town manager in. A narrative summary of the strengths that were, again, this is from everyone's put together. The select board collectively recognizes that Michael Herbert brings a powerful set of strengths to his role. His passion for the community, strategic vision, and steadfast integrity set the tone for effective leadership. He communicates that vision clearly and builds trust through openness and empathy, making him not just an administrator, but a true community leader. Additionally, his strong financial management and ability to multitask enables him to turn ambitious plans into reality without losing sight of fiscal responsibility. These strengths have been instrumental in Ashland's progress and are the foundation of Michael's effectiveness of performance. Narrative summary of improvement areas. The select board's constructive feedback for Michael centers on fine tuning and already strong performance. The overarching themes are communication, delegation, and maintaining objectivity. By keeping all the board members uniformly informed and providing robust analysis for decisions, he will strengthen trust and efficiency at the governance level. By delegating more and guarding against personal overload, he will sustain his effectiveness and be able to engage even more with the community and big picture issues. And by approaching sensitive personnel or public situations with a touch more detachment and a steady fact-based demeanor, he will navigate controversies without compromising his integrity or focus. The board is confident that addressing these areas will not only improve Michael's performance, but also make his job more manageable and rewarding in the future. In summary, upon the, the final, the annual evaluation, the select board's message is one of confidence and appreciation. Michael Herbert is performing at a high level, demonstrating effective leadership, strategic vision, and dedication that have positively impacted the town. The board's overall rating reflects the view that he is meeting or exceeding expectations in most areas. We acknowledge a few areas for continued growth, largely around communication and personal workload management. But these are seen as refinements to an otherwise strong performance. Collectively, the board is grateful for Michael's hard work and passion. We look forward to continuing to partner with him as Ashland navigates its upcoming challenges and builds on the successes of the past year.
Thank you, Yolanda. Thank you for all the work and effort to get that done. And, and I'm sorry you had to go through those, those, those matters to get this, to get this done, because it wasn't, it wasn't easy. And we appreciate all, all your effort and sacrifice to get this completed.
Not a sacrifice, but thank you.
Well, you had some issues that you had to deal with and, and you did it, you did it very professionally. Very, very grateful for your efforts. Any comments or anything you want to add to what Yolanda and what we basically collectively have said? I'll open it up to the board.
No, I think that was a good summary. You know, and, and I too appreciate your efforts, Michael, and, and I think that the areas that we suggested you refine are indeed, I think it was outlined as it would improve your life as well. And so I look forward to that. You know, I think we, you've had a couple of new board members now for a year or two, and so I think that puts different eyes on, on things and people who aren't as familiar with things. And so sometimes that's a good opportunity, really, to see how we need to adjust a little bit. So I appreciate that and, and that's, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Anyone, Brandy, Makita? Okay, you're good.
So the only thing I would add is just that, you know, all of us had an opportunity to also sit with Michael and go through like our personal evaluations and discussions. And I think that's also a really important part of the process because we, it's, it's, it's also, it's also talking to you on how we can do a better job of, you know, working collectively together. So I think that that was, you know, it's a good part of the process. And, you know, I appreciate the work that you do and that, you know, I mean, none of us are wallflowers. We're pretty, we're pretty strong personalities here, so, you know, to balance all of us, you know, that, that takes some finessing too, I'm sure. But just thank you and I'm glad that, that Chat G P T, you know, could come through. I still need to use, I still, I have never used it. I've been scared to death of the thing, so I need to, now I need to.
Now we can sit down with Michael. Now we know that he's proficient in it. We'll sit down.
Oh, my God.
Be careful, folks. You know, I, I will say that, you know, as somebody who goes across country and trades people on how to do prompt engineering and such, I think it's good that we're able to utilize these tools, but I think we also do need to be careful about how they're utilized. They are not perfect. It is not perfect and is unfortunately, you know, those of us in I T, we say garbage in and garbage out. But sometimes you put good stuff into Chat G P T and you do get garbage out. So, so just, just a, just a caveat before we start doing free advertising for
This was definitely not free advertising, but I think this was a tool that helped.
Sure.
Because I know in the past for myself, when I've done the accumulation of the, the different evaluations, I did not have as detailed a final report and evaluation. What I would say is similar to your caution of, none of this is proprietary information that was put in here.
Right.
Right? We, we don't wanna go put anything proprietary into Chat G P T, because once you put it in there, it then becomes into the public domain.
Yeah.
So if you want, and you know, there are ways to do it with that, with A I, but you then are buying something so that it can stay proprietary.
Correct.
The way to do it is, is ask Makita before you do it.
Or people have been more skilled than I.
Or ask Chat G P T to develop a very neutral problem.
Okay, no, no.
I, I just had one more thing to add that I'm sorry I forgot to say. I just wanted to mention that I think you, you're restructuring, you know, with the loss of, of Jen Ball, and you're restructuring. Hopefully that will help with everything you have on your plate going forward. And I also just wanted to make mention that that was actually, we, we saved a little bit of money, not a huge amount of money, but it was actually cheaper than, than continuing the way we were going. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
And it made, and it made, it made some of the, the workload a little easier, you know, not a whole heck of a lot, but a little bit easier. You know, and that's one of the things that you and I had discussed during a time together was, you know, allowing other people to take more work off your shoulders.
Well, it allows, I think, you know, one of the things the restructuring has allowed me to do is actually focus on some other things that needed to be done. You know, and like we talked at the retreat, some of that more proactive stuff and some of the more day to day stuff that are more on the strategic level, I guess you could say, as opposed to more of the tactical level. But yeah, it definitely, you know, it, it's, it's refreshing to get feedback where both, you know, the strengths and the areas of improvement are consistent across the board members. You can imagine it would be very, very difficult if I have five different sets of, you know, things to work on or five different things and trying to, trying to put that, you know, put a plan together into doing that. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a year so far. Twenty twenty-five has been a year full of challenges, but also opportunity. And you know, I really, really, you know, first of all, I want to thank the board for all their support and guidance and direction and, and partnership that we have. Really, you, you know how much I really feel strongly about a team and a team working together to accomplish common goals. And I think that's what we have been able to do over the last decade. And I'm really, you know, despite the loss of some real key personnel, I'm really excited about who we have and, and our team in place right now as that starts filling out and we're starting to put in some of the final pieces. You know, we've got a nice mix of familiar faces that are continuing in the same roles, but familiar faces that are in new roles and then also new faces. And, you know, so far it's been really energizing and I can't, I just really can't thank enough you know, the four, four ladies in, in the office. You know, Catherine, Beth, Diane, Susan, and just the work that they do, the dedication that they show to the town, but also the support that they show me personally has just been, you know, the difference sometimes between some very good days and some very bad days. So I consider myself very, very fortunate to be surrounded by talented people. And I was talking with a former manager the other day, and we talk about the fact that, you know, when, when you have, you know, predominantly positive reviews that talk about accomplishments, you just feel like, oh, my gosh, I really didn't do any of these things. It's all been really the staff that have done this and, and volunteers. And so it's been very, very grateful for, like I said, the, the talent and the dedication that we have in our team. So thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll just let the circle into something you just said with respect to that. It's, it's the leadership that is provided from your office that allows that to happen.
Just set the table.
You set the table. So we thank you for doing what you do. It's a team, it's a team effort. It's not one individual. It's a, it's a group of collective people that have a, a vision and a goal and they're all on the same page with respect to it. And it's okay to have differences of opinion that go along with a day to day workload. And, because if you don't, then there's definitely something wrong. That's, that's a dictatorship. That's not, that's not collective minds working together. So with respect to that, so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done and appreciate everything that all the new hirees and their new positions are doing. So it's working out well. I believe it's working out well.
Likewise.
All right. Next on our agenda is to open the special town meeting warrant of special town meeting scheduled for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I have a motion to read it unless somebody else would like to read it. Okay, you're all set. There are second. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye? No one absent. You just walked out the hall. Okay, so that's passed, and we don't have to do anything else with that. Do we need to sign something off?
You don't need to sign something right now. I don't know if you, you know, when Catherine, just to kind of go through the outline of just the dates.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful just to either outline the process or just to direct folks to where they can, they can see an outline of the process, so they know what's, what, what this, what we just did and what this means.
What, what did we just do?
What did we just do?
So what we just did is we opened the warrant for a special town meeting, which will take place on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And listed in the backup is exactly the timetable. So September twenty-seventh, excuse me, will be the deadline for notice of intent to submit proposed warrant articles. Those proposed articles are filed with the select board's office, and I believe my contact info is actually listed. Yes, so it's down below. And then September twenty-seventh through October fifteenth, that's when there'll be discussions, presentations, public hearings. October sixteenth is when the select board will vote to close and post the warrant. November fifth, we will, well, that's the, the last date to go ahead and post the warrant. And then November nineteenth is the actual special time meeting, so.
Seven o'clock at the Ashland High School.
Mm-hmm.
Unless we've changed the news, but I'm, we're, it's the same, right?
No, it's at the high school.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you for that. I appreciate that. Matter of fact, the
Any sense on what, I mean, I, I believe we're gonna look at doing the comprehensive plan. Any sense on what other articles might be brought forward? I mean, obviously funding and things like that, but anything else big?
Looks like as of right now, we have just about ten articles, obviously free cash. And then we have the, let's see, we have the in-law bylaw. So when we voted in the A D U bylaw, we just need to, I think redo the, the in-law bylaw. And then C P C, funding for the Y. We have capital, the senior tax exemption, the Keefe Tech budget adjustment article, the regional agreement. And these are, this is actually just a future tracker, so you can keep track of like everything that's coming. This is tentative, obviously. Update the dog licensing bylaw, which we attempted to do last time. We just needed more information this time around. And then they only listed the mass general law, so this one is just an acceptance of another section of chapter one thirty-eight, and we're just inserting. So those are the tentative ones that we have right now. I think that was just about ten.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, we could potentially have a couple more, you know, based on how things evolve. Not necessarily in Ashland, but you know, some things with Keith and everything, which I'll talk about a little bit later.
Okay.
I did historical commission meet last night, and they were talking about potential something that they may want to put on the warrant, but there were still some questions and issues that they wanted to discuss, so they didn't get into detail with it. I just told them that we were going to open the warrant tomorrow, so, which is today, so, so they're aware of it.
Good. Thank you for covering that for me, Joe.
My pleasure. It was my pleasure. It was, it was, it was eye opening. It was good. Very, very good. Okay, so we moved that along.
Did we vote? Did I miss the vote?
We did.
Okay, that's fine. That's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure we actually open.
The town meeting, the special town meeting is now, warrant is now open.
Yeah, it's now open.
Just wanted to make sure. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Four zero one, unless you want to add your vote. We can do that.
I think we're good.
We're good. Okay, yes, well, give everybody the opportunity. Okay. Moving on. The next item on Old and New Business is to authorize the chair to execute regulatory agreement and restrictive covenants for four eighty-seven Main Street with Habitat for Humanity, Metro West Greater Worcester, Inc., and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is their L I P. And for the purpose of securing and qualifying the unit for the local initiative program.
So I move that the board approve the regulatory agreement and restrictive covenant for four eighty-seven Main Street, one unit with Habitat for Humanity, Metro West, Greater Worcester, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the purpose of securing and qualifying the unit for the local initiative program and authorize the chair to execute same.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five zero.
Do we know, are they gonna be like looking for people to help with the build and how that's being processed?
You know what? I will ask that tomorrow because I am gonna hand deliver this paperwork to them. So I'll, I'll let you know that.
Okay.
There will be, Yolanda, that, that's, I think Habitat is starting to organize that right now.
Okay, I know that Brandy and I had the opportunity many years ago to participate in the build that happened in Holliston. And it was a fabulous opportunity and to have it here in Ashland to be able to help with that. I mean, I know we had potentially talked about like doing a select board build or, and you go for a few, you know, you sign up, you go for a few hours and you do what you can. And sometimes it's easier stuff, sometimes it's, you know, harder, but they, they show you how to do it, so. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and we didn't get hurt.
Nope.
None of us got hurt.
Nope.
And, and somehow, and somehow, even though we were all there, the house did get built eventually, so.
It looks good, too.
We moved along.
It's straight, it's leveling.
Still standing.
It was, it was, yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say you can show me how to paint, but believe me, you don't want me painting. A lot of things get painted that are
We'll give you a small paintbrush and you can paint the cracks. You can do the prep work, Claudia.
I think we were, we were stapling on some of the wrap that they put on the outside of the house. We were moving stuff. There was some hammering going on, I remember. Compress, yes, there was eye protection. Anyway.
Safety first.
Is there any video of this?
There are pictures. There are pictures. Yes. Anyway, okay.
That's now that. Well, that's, that's cool. That's
That'd be great.
It, it's a great program and it's, it's for those who want to get involved.
Yeah.
Get ahold of, get ahold of Habitat, and I'm sure they'd be happy to hook you up with dates and times and
So, so you're gonna, you're gonna get some more information about that.
Yes, I will. Yeah, because I actually have all the paperwork here.
And then we can decide.
Once Sue notarizes it, I will head it up myself.
Great.
Because we're a little behind the schedule getting that done, so we want to make sure we get it done. Okay, sounds good. Update on the dog park. And they were at the Thomas Market last week.
Yeah.
And a nice conversation with them. Yeah, yeah, very, very nice. So, Yolanda, would you like to give a quick update?
My understanding, I don't have the details, but I know that we are looking to break ground sometime this month. We have a contractor. We have the financing lined up. And yeah, so we're just looking forward to the day. I'm sure Beth will, is I'm sure Beth will, is gonna get it out. There's gonna be no official groundbreaking ceremony because we just want to get it going.
Yep.
But the plan is that once it's complete, there will be a ribbon cutting to.
Nice.
To commemorate it. Um, yeah. Three to four months is the expected completion, completion date. It's not, it's not a very large park. I mean, it'll be a nice size for Ashland. I think it's something that the contractor, the contractor that we're using, they're finishing another project, and then they're just gonna be focusing on the dog park, is my understanding.
So, probably late October, early November, maybe?
Yeah.
In that, in that range?
Yes, early winter. And then, one thing, one thing that was talked about is that the park may need to be closed in the winter, depending on weather, because of how it sits on the hill.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, if it's, if it's rainy and muddy, we don't want people going in there.
Yep.
But we'll see.
Yep. Well, that makes sense.
People are excited.
Does it need to be closed just be this year until there's grass or something, or would it be?
I think it's a continuing thing because of where it sits in the forest and how it could impact because there are, it's sitting up on a hill, and then there's wetlands around it, so they don't want. So, it's gonna be an ongoing review, and we'll see what happens.
Is, is the dog park committee going to be the ones that make that call, or, like, what is?
I think it'll be joint between the dog park committee and conservation because they'll be monitoring it.
Okay.
Uh, because of the wetlands around it.
Okay.
Uh, but the dog park committee has recruited a number of volunteers, and we're looking for more volunteers. If you want to come and help, because, um, the agreement right now is that the dog park committee and its volunteers will be picking up the poop and things like that to alleviate the potential burden on our DPW. So, there will be waste receptacles inside the park, but it'll be responsibility of the dog park committee and volunteers to make sure it gets out into the waste receptacles outside of the park, so it's easier for DPW. Also, you know, filling in divots and holes and stuff like that. But I, we're getting more volunteers, so if you have a dog and you'd like to volunteer, you can reach out to the dog car park committee. I should know the email, but I don't, but we're on Facebook. But it should, people are very excited, and I keep hearing, the, the one thing I need to remind people is people are like, oh, we've been working on this for so long, and people don't remember, which is crazy. We had COVID in the middle of it.
Yeah.
For two years, or almost three years, where as a community, we were focusing on keeping people safe and doing things. So, the dog park had to get put on hold. So.
Like a lot of things.
Like a lot of things.
Yeah.
But we, like I said, we, we have the funding from the Stanton Foundation. We are gonna be one of the last parks that get funding because they're gonna be going away. So, we are fortunate to have that, and we have the check in hand, so it's not like, oh, we might get it. We have the check in hand from the Stanton Foundation to build this park, and then the rest is coming from CPC, thanks to the members of the community who voted to support it.
Very nice. Very good. Looking forward to seeing that.
Thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I know, I know Jen Ball did a lot of work on this. I know Beth is working on this really hard.
Yes, yes.
And the, the, the dog park committee has been kind of hanging in there for, for all of this, so.
It's been, I think we first started meeting in either seven, I think, twenty seventeen, was people, and, and what's, what's interesting is it's one of those things where people came to me and said, shouldn't the select board create a group, a subcommittee, to do the dog park? I said, no, let's get some volunteers together, and I think that allowed certain things to just keep going, which was, I think, a positive thing.
Awesome.
Very nice. Thank you for that update, and thank you for your continued, uh, work with, with that group. Looking forward to it. The, uh, the energy that I saw, uh, Saturday at their booth, it was, it was, it, they were like three or four people, you know, throughout, coming in and out. Yeah, throughout the morning, going in, talking, whatever. So, there's a lot of anticipation and excitement with it. So, it's a good thing. That's a good thing. All right. Next on the board, discuss board communication processes.
So, I put this on the agenda, so I should probably talk a little bit about. We had this on our agenda for our retreat and didn't get to it. And so, I thought, first of all, like, I had, when I saw it on our agenda for our retreat, I had something very specific in mind that I wanted to talk about, and then I figured we'd all probably have some things as well. But, um, I know that, I think it was a few months ago, maybe it was, it could be as long as six months ago, because my brain just, it smushes it all together. But we had talked about, you know, when, when emails come into the select board email address, um, and, you know, we all receive the emails, but we all can't respond because of open meeting law, and typically, like, the chair would respond, or sometimes if it's much more technical in nature, sometimes I'm, I'm sure, you know, Michael, or, or Catherine, or Beth, or Jen, you know, at the time, would, would respond. Um, but all of us never know kind of what the resolution on a lot of this stuff is. So, I know we had talked about potentially, um, when responses were sent out to forward those to, to Susan, and Susan would include them in our packets, so, like, we could see the responses. And I just kind of wanted to revisit that because, you know, that hasn't been something that we've done regularly. You know, if we want to try to resuscitate that and do that, or if there's something else that we want to try to, um, make sure we're all kind of all looped into some of that.
Yeah, I think one of the other discussions was that the chair either, it could be either included in our packet or that it could be brought up at the, the meeting, right, as the, as part of board reports or something. You know, and the other thing that we can discuss is, it's been the chair, but does it need to be the chair? I don't know. Other boards, it's the clerk. Other boards, it's whoever feels that they're the right person to answer that question. So, I don't know if we want to discuss just even that. Who is gonna respond to an email that comes to the full board?
Well, if there's someone that has the expertise in a specific topic, uh, because they've been involved in a, a matter, I would suggest that the chair would offer that individual the opportunity to respond. That would, that would make sense. Uh, if not, then I would think that, you know, you have, you have a point person.
Yep.
The point person would be the chair, and then if there is any issues or concerns that you all may have about that email that comes in, you send your responses or your thoughts and ideas to the chair so he can, or he or she can make that response, uh, to, to the individual who is being, uh, quoted, that, that, that information. I would do, that's, that's how it would look at it. I don't know how you all feel about it, but that's, this is my idea.
I mean, that works. Um, do we think that it's best to see things like, um, copies of emails? Or to Yolanda's point, like, we could put an item on our agenda, a standing point, like, discuss incoming emails or something?
Correspondence discussions.
Correspondence. Right, well, you know, that, in the past, there were, there was a, a section of correspondence. And I'm talking years ago. When I first got on, there was, there was a line item about correspondences.
I don't ever remember sitting here and having a discussion about correspondence.
It went away just like the Pledge of Allegiance has gone away.
I mean, so it's been thirteen, it's been thirteen years since correspondence was a regular thing on our agenda. But, I mean, that doesn't mean it can't be.
Yeah.
Yep.
But if we want to resurrect that, that's not a bad idea. We talk about open and, you know, transparency. You, you, you can't have anything more transparent than that.
I tend to agree, Joe. I mean, and, and if we don't need it for a particular cycle, we don't have to do it. But like, if there's, we should definitely, like, hold space for that, because, uh, to your point, like, I think, um, to Yolanda and Randy's point, like, I think that, you know, um, that, that's gonna help us get back to folks, uh, you know, and give us an opportunity to get back to folks as well. So, yeah, I think everything that you've mentioned, Randy and, and Yolanda about process makes sense to me, too. But, yeah, I think if we just can agree on, on that's what the process, you know, if that's what the process looks like, then we should try to run it for a little while, see if it works, and then maybe in a few months, come back, revisit it, and see if it's really working. Or if it's not, then we can make adjustments.
Right, tweak it. The only concern that I have by doing this is that if someone's looking for a response sooner than later, it's gonna take a while for us to have our meetings, have that discussion.
Oh, no, 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 not, no.
I don't think we're looking to have the discussion before the, before you respond. I think to your point, right, if an email, based on, I think, an email comes in.
Yep.
And if we have thought on that, we send it to you.
Yep.
And you respond to the person.
I'll respond back, and I'll give the response to you.
And then, when we have our next meeting, you then let us know what the response has been.
That's fine. Yeah, okay, good.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Would, would you like me to just look at what some other communities might do as, like, a best practice type of?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just would like to see us do something, because I think I brought this up when Yolanda was state chair. And, and we never pulled it together.
Right, there would be emails that I was, responded, and then there was no follow-up to you guys.
You know, because you feel like.
Yeah, exactly. You, you feel like you're, you can't, like, you feel like you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing and responding to constituents. I, I actually, I'm in favor of taking a look at what other communities do, but I am, I am also in favor of, uh, running with the process that we've identified to see if it works. And then we can incorporate any kind of tweaks that, you know, if we find another community that's doing something else, or, you know, we can incorporate that to our process, or tweak our process. But like, um, being a, being a researcher, you know, I'm always in favor of research, but I also want to make sure that we take some action on this, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I know you kind of have a tracker as to, you know, for our agendas. Can we have this as sort of like a standing, an item on, on that? That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm actually sitting on two right now, to be very honest with you. Because I'm, you know, I want to make sure we respond properly.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So.
Um, okay.
Never mind, never mind. No, no, no. You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to move on? Are we good? Randy brought up another, uh, that's, uh, discuss Ashland Day slash Pumpkin Fest. So, you're on.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure if people, I know, I know Joe has put out some, some information on social media, but, you know, we haven't had a broader discussion about Ashland Day this year. But, um, I know the Ashland Day Committee has been working hard to try to fundraise and has done, um, a great job of doing our summer concerts this year and, um, other events like the Halloween, the Halloween Parade, and, and things that the, the Ashland Day, um, Committee has funded. But I think, as we know, um, Ashland Day last year did not pan out quite, quite like we had hoped and did not raise the funds that typically would fund the next year's worth of Ashland Day. And, um, it's not a cheap endeavor to, to put on. So, uh, when we were sitting in our retreat last month, and we were talking about events in town, and we were just hyp, literally, it was like a hypothetical kind of discussion about Ashland Day, and Joe was like, oh, we're not having Ashland Day this year. So, we, um, you know, I know Ashland Day is something that, that you guys work hard on and that the community loves. Um, and it's, it's been hard because there was COVID and, and everything else, too. So, you know, it's, it's been, it's probably been, what, since twenty nineteen that we've had, like a, like a.
Twenty nineteen was our last solid.
Ashland Day.
Ashland Day.
Yeah.
So, um, so when we kind of heard that Ashland Day wasn't going to happen this year, Claudia and I talked and talked about, you know, maybe there was a way that we could do something. And so, we, um, reached out to Josh Wixer at, um, Ashland High School Student Council, who's, um, the groups over at the high school use Ashland Day as a huge fundraising opportunity. And, um, you know, asked him if he was, you know, potentially willing to be a partner in creating something, something else. Um, a couple of years ago, they did Pumpkin Fest at the high school, which was, uh, uh, you know, got a lot of positive feedback. Um, it was, it was, there were a lot of games and activities and things. And it was, it was a very, it was kind of a successful thing that the, the student council put together. And Josh was on board, and, um, we also met with, um, Chrissy Reynolds, through the Ashland Business Association, in ways that we can partner with, um, local businesses in a way to, to, um, to really have a, um, a, a good event. So, fast forward. So, we are, um, working towards Pumpkin Fest twenty twenty-five. And, um, the date that we are working with is October fourth. So, we have a very compressed time schedule. Um, we had looked at some other dates. We had looked at, you know, maybe tacking on to Dragonfly, and it just, it literally wasn't going to, to work. The farmer's market is still, um, you know, we didn't want to have something at Stone Park with the Dragonfly Festival because it would draw people away from downtown, which is really like what Dragonfly is about, you know, um, supporting the businesses and things downtown. So, we didn't want to, that was not our intention at all, so we were looking at different options. Given the weekends, the holiday weekends and things in October, October fourth was really like the only, the only date we really could do it. So, we booked Stone Park, and, um, we are, um, starting the process of planning this, this, um, event utilizing the framework that Josh Wixer had put together for Pumpkin Fest, which is actually, um, really well-structured. Like, he did a, he did a really great job. He literally, like, handed us a packet of stuff that he's done, and it's, like, I think we have a really great framework to work with. And so, we've, we've talked, and I wanted to kind of get the board's thoughts on some things because one of the things that we talked about Pumpkin Fest was, you know, last time it was at the high school. And it was really about the school groups, and there were other, you know, community tables there and businesses that were there and supporting it. But I think that the, um, the general feel of Pumpkin Fest was it was sort of a school event. And Ashland Day, as we know, is, is really a celebratory, community-wide event, which, which, um, we love.
Bless you.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, in, in conversations with Claudia and Josh and Chrissy, we thought, like, maybe we can sort of expand Pumpkin Fest to really incorporate the spirit of Ashland Day. And one of the things that we were talking about was, um, if we position it as a real town-wide event, and it's a partnership or a collaboration, um, between possibly the schools, us as a select board, possibly, and our Ashland businesses, we could really have something really special. Like, I've had conversations with Joe. I've had conversations with Yolanda and Makita about wanting to help with something like this. And, you know, I think if the select board was, for lack of a better word, putting on this, um, putting on this, uh, event, or sponsoring it and working on it, it would, um, it would be very good for the community, I think. It would be really good for, um, we could expand Pumpkin Fest and make it more, more, more on the town side, so we could maybe do some more cultural events. Maybe we can expand it to include all ages. Uh, we had talked about things like, um, like a corn holder and things that we might be able to incorporate that were more broad-based than just schools. Yeah, so, um, but kind of follow the same framework as Pumpkin Fest in that, you know, have the tables and the booths have more activities and games and things that people, um, had given feedback that they really loved. And, um, you know, really try to, to, um, be able to use it as a fundraiser for, for not only, um, groups and things. But in talking to Josh, Josh was like, you know, any proceeds that we would get from this, we would be totally willing to put towards next year's Ashland.
For twenty twenty-six.
For twenty twenty-six. Wow. So, um, but, you know, I wanted to kind of get a feel, because we're gonna be hitting the ground running on this. I wanted to see if, and I'll kind of explain a little bit more about that, but wanted to see if, 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 how you all felt about doing this as sort of a, a board-sponsored event. Because I do think, I do think doing something really positive for the community and having the board be a part of that would be a really good thing, and that's my take. But I wanted to see sort of what, where people are with it.
Yeah, so I, you know, first of all, I just want to say that it was a very sad moment. When, I know, Joe, I know how sad it must have been for you and I'm sure, well, I can't entirely imagine it. But I would, I would like to see us publicize this as, you know, at Ashland Day 2025, as as we try to figure out how we can continue forward from here. I would like your team, anybody who's willing to come on board with the vast amount of expertise you all have, to work with, you know, the nice thing about working with the schools are you, you have a lot of students who do a lot of work. You know, you you don't have to go out in the community and try to find volunteers. There's plenty of volunteers that are coming out of the schools. And so I I would really like to see us be able to sponsor it and, you know, I I wish that we had realized how much trouble, you know, the concept, the Ashland Day was in so that maybe we could have stepped up and been figured this out sooner. So, but I would certainly like to see us go forward. I do think it's important for our community. It is something that's been, I don't know, what, how many years is it? Thirty?
Thirty seven.
Yeah. And and so it's certainly something that I would like to see go forward. I would like to still continue in the Ashland Day name that, you know, I, because I think it's, it is about our community. And I think to get everybody in the community on board, it's nice to have, you know, a larger name than just say Pumpkin Fest. And that's just, but I I would like to see the community have a celebratory event like we've had for 37 years. I think it might be 38 because I was pregnant on day one and my daughter was born the next day. So I think it might be 38.
It could be. It could be. Well.
Yeah, it's fine. But that's how I remember the first Ashland Day.
I I can't comment on that.
I have a couple of questions and then, so Pumpkin Fest, when they did it, it was truly a fundraiser for all those organizations because for the kids, they hadn't had Ashland Day for two years and they brought this. So whereas I applaud them wanting to then give those proceeds to Ashland Day for the future, I would want to say, do they need to keep some of it for themselves?
So they would. So like, so if you remember at Pumpkin Fest, everyone got tickets? They sold tickets?
Yes.
And each, each table, each booth would charge, they were like 50 cent tickets? And they would say, okay, this, you you dunk a basket in this and it's two tickets. So the organizations would take those two tickets and then they would collect them in a bag and then give them to student council and student council would give them cash for them.
Right.
Credit, whatever that was. That's still going to be the 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 MO.
Okay.
What we would say is like, we're going to fundraise and try to raise enough money for the types of things that we're going to have at Pumpkin Fest. And anything, so like anything, anything in addition to that's generated. So like if we have four bouncy houses and the bouncy houses are, generate a thousand dollars extra and above.
In profit.
In profit, above and beyond after everything's tallied. You know, we would basically.
Okay, so so the kids would still do what they did for Pumpkin Fest? And then the idea is that we would do an Ashland-esque, Ashland Day-esque kind of thing? And the reason you're pushing it to October 4th is to give us more time rather than doing it on the same day that Ashland Day would usually be?
Yes. Yeah, we can't, we can't get that.
Okay, okay. So that's fine. So that's fine.
It gives us two weeks, but two weeks is like.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I get, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to clarify. So would it be the kind of thing where we would reach out to vendors and they would pay for, you know, similar to Ashland Day? Or or not?
So, so we kind of have a framework for, like, what things cost based on what Pumpkin Fest did. And if the board is supportive of it, what I, what I would do is we would put together like a formal proposal for you guys to look at and see how everything is structured. And then, you know, you know, there, my, my thought is that we would ask the select board for a financial contribution to it. But we have, we have a whole process in place for not only fundraising for, like, asking like businesses for support.
Okay.
But we also have a component of this where it is going to be a crowdsourcing, individual ask from our residents to try to pull this together very quickly. Because we're going to need, we're going to need everyone to kind of want this to continue.
Okay. Okay. So another question is, at Pumpkin Fest, they didn't have tents. They just set the stuff up in the field. And there was, there was a real open sense of that. I know in Ashland Day, every group has always had to have a tent. Are we going to look, are you going to look at like, if you are a vendor, you can put up a tent, but the kids' groups, we're just going to let them not have tents? I mean, and and may, if I'm getting into too much detail, let me know, but.
I think the thought is that we're not going to provide tents.
Okay.
So if people, if if little groups want a tent, like at Ashland Day, they can put up their own tents.
Okay.
And we don't, we.
Right. No, and I know that Ashland Day didn't provide it, but I know part of the thing was you, you sort of, you know, you got your space and you, my understanding is you expected them to have a tent.
Yeah.
So that sort of.
We gave them a ten by ten space.
Right, okay, okay. So I, I mean, from my perspective, first of all, thank you for stepping up and doing this. I know organizing something like this takes a lot of time and I know Claudia, you and Brandy were, you know, having conversations. And thank you to Mr. Wixer for being willing to. I like the idea of moving forward and I will offer as much support as possible, but I am also producing the haunt at Hopkinton Center for the Arts.
Sounds also a good take.
Which is. Which is also a good organization, but, you know, so, but no, I think, my feeling is, let's go for this. Let's see what we can do. And I would say, Joe, if, you know, Ashland Day Committee, as much as you want to help and support, would be great. And as we've said in our select board retreat, right, what we're seeing and and I chatted with Steve Mitchell about this, that, you know, farmer's market, we have to start bringing in younger residents for some of these things so that they can keep going. Because at some point, people, volunteers get tired.
So to that point, that's a really great segue. We are meeting this Sunday.
Okay.
August 10th, 10:00 AM at Dolce de Leche. We're asking, the, the, the ask is going to go out to the public. We need volunteers to come help. We've got a task list. We've got an aggressive timeline. And it's very doable, but we need people's help. So I would love, like Claudia said, I would love for the Ashland Day Committee to kind of be a part of this because you guys have built like so much greatness over the years. And to have you guys be a part of this would be, we, you know, it would.
Some of my, and I, I spoke to Claudia already.
Yeah.
There's, there's like four or five of them that are on vacation. And unfortunately, they're not going to be, they're not going to be around.
Yeah.
But those that are, that are available, I will send them a note along again that that's this Sunday at 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, so.
And I, I think one of the key things, too, in my mind anyways, is that, you know, we could be creating a little bit of a roadmap about how to move forward in the future by really partnering with the, with the schools and and in that way, we don't have to ask, have a big ask of the town side of employee stuff. It's, again, we have some volunteers. We can get some adult volunteers. Certainly, all the students have an adult with them anyways at each of those organizations. But it just is an opportunity, I think, to maybe figure out, how do we keep this going?
Well, one of the, if you don't mind interrupt, one of the things that, you know, the town employees, they sit, they help us set up on on that Friday. They drop off the horses and detour signs and things of that nature. But the, the volunteers that morning, that Saturday morning are the ones that erect the signs up so that way we don't have an issue with traffic. And now that we have, you know, the new coffee shop right, right there across the street, we have to keep that road open to a point. So we have to detour traffic in a certain way. So that's, that comes into play.
The street has not been closed. I don't remember Summer Street ever being closed for Ashland Day.
Always been closed for Ashland Day. Always been closed. We used for parking.
I've always parked there anyway. Okay.
Well, yeah, it's for parking.
Oh, okay.
It's enough for two traffic.
Oh, okay. What I was going to say is, I know that some of the principals are still sending stuff out to the students and their families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would see if you can quickly pull something together and ask them to send something out for the, for this meeting on August 10th and.
And the only concern that I would have, and I'm going to push, I'll push back lightly, not, not a whole lot, is that right now, we're trying to generate months, funds for for next year.
Yep.
So we've sent out, you know, requests and letters of, you know, contributions for Ashland Day 2026. And I don't want them to get confused with you, with your push for Ashland Day slash Oktoberfest 2025. Because I can hear, I can see it happening. Well, I already gave. And that, that could, that could be a potential, you know, problem with funding, you know, being split to thinking that, oh, well, I gave it to 2026. Well, this is, and I don't want that, I don't want that to become a, a problem.
Yeah, I think maybe even if you shared, people who have provided funding for this year or for 2026, that would help, might give us some insight as to who maybe we don't approach or we're very careful about how we, how we approach them.
Yeah.
But, you know.
And it just, I mean, I know if it's inappropriate or not, but it was at the historical meeting last night. And there was, there was suggestion that maybe she's going to run the CPC for funding for. And I said, we've never done that before. And I said, I don't think it's something.
I don't think there's anything under CPC that would cover the expenses. No, that's not for, not, pretty sure not for a festival.
I mean, I appreciate.
And we've never done that.
Right. I appreciate the creativity and I think that, and I'm actually very glad to hear that people were engaged about that issue last night. I haven't really said anything about this yet, so I just wanted to chime in for a few minutes. You know, I think, I mean, I, I agree with everyone here. I think this, Ashland Day is, is, is a big event for our town. And it's, you know, it's, I think it's a big point of local pride. And if there's any way that we can make it happen during this cycle, I think that we should look at it. But I think coming out of this year, we should either immediately after, put together some kind of plan about how we can have this event going forward. You know, how.
Brave when there's rain.
Well, that too. But I mean, I think there needs to be, I think we need to, we can take some of the, 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 the things that we've implemented on this round, see what's worked, what hasn't, and build a plan and really plan out for the next, like, few years, you know, about like how we can keep this event going. But I think, I can't remember if it was Yolanda or Brandy, but the, the key here is, is that we think it's of value. We've, we, we feel that it would be important to the town. But events like this and other things that are volunteer-driven have to be set as a priority by our residents. If there is no support or little support for these sort of events, then it is impossible for us to do it. I think we, we've got like a little bit of a Hail Mary here. This year, we're going to put something together. But I think going forward, some definitely, I've, I've heard folks say what it means to them, what Ashland Day means to them. We need to operationalize that feeling into volunteer hours, into whatever it takes to make that happen. So.
And, and funding, too.
And, 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 and funding as well. And that's part of the plan, Brandy. I think we have to put together, you know, what, what are the fiscals around this? And educate people that, you know, this isn't something that just kind of happens. You know, this happens because we, as a town, can make it happen. And it won't happen if we, as a town, do not support it. And I think that's probably the number one lesson out of this year that, that, that I think we're learning and that we're, we're educating folks on. But I, I would, I would implore folks that who are listening tonight or watching this on replay, you know, if this is something that you care about, please be at that meeting on Sunday morning at 10:00 AM. And if not, get in touch with us to find out how you can support, you know. Like I said, Ashland Day is a point of pride and Joe, you and your committee have, have worked some real magic over the years.
Yeah, you know, it's unfortunate when you, when you do these things, and and hopefully this doesn't happen this year. If you're having clement weather and you've already contracted out.
Yeah.
You still have to pay those vendors.
That's right.
They're expecting their money.
No matter what.
Could we, could we have a rain date?
We're looking at.
Because that's something I think if you, because if you, if you don't have a rain date and then you try to move it to the next day, a lot of vendors are tied up.
We're looking at a rain location, so.
A rain location?
Yes.
So that if it's raining?
Yeah, your house.
Yeah, not everyone would fit, but.
No, I think a rain location, like the gym at the high school or something like that, I think that's a great backup plan. This is the kind of planning that we kind of have to work through.
That's a great, it's, and that was something that was a, like a, a big thing because again, you know, if, if there's rain, it, it, it literally takes the air out of the bouncy houses, you know? So.
Yeah, I mean, last year was, was, you know, I mean, last two years, right? One year you actually canceled because there was an expected hurricane. And it was not quite as bad, but it was still a rainy day. And then last year you went forward and it was raining. So we were there only half the day.
We were there for three, not even three hours. I think it was two and a half. And then the heavy rains came and then what stopped us was the wind.
Yeah.
Bouncy houses and all those other things. And you have to watch out for the safety of the people there.
Oh, of course.
You know, I don't want, I don't want tents to go flying around and have somebody hit. Then that ruins the whole.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So, so just, so anyone that wants to come on Sunday, please, please, please come. Bring a friend, bring a neighbor, bring a tent. We've got lots of work to do and.
Be ready to sign up and step up and do something.
So we've got some, we've, but, but I just have to give a, a huge shout out to, to Josh Wixer, who quite literally like has a, has an excellent framework. And he said he, they learned so much. And he's got like five student council kids that are like raring and ready to go. And so, and, and we're going to be able to utilize, so it was approved as a fundraiser on the high school side, which means we can accept credit card payments into like the student council account. And then that we will like be able to to distribute that.
One other question, if, it's Wednesday. People may have plans for Sunday already. If they can't attend the meeting on Sunday, how can they get in touch? How can they support? What can they do?
So people can be, feel free to, to email me. So bekinsman@ashlandmass.com. There's going to be something in Michael's newsletter this week about the meeting on Sunday. We're going to have something in Town Pages. There's going to be a QR code where people can donate or help us in the, the, the process. And just, you know, I ask people for their support because it, it's going, this is going to be one of those things where it really takes a village because we have less than two months to plan an event that usually takes a year. So, or at least, you know.
It definitely takes a year. I mean, we, we start up three days after the event is over.
Yeah.
You know, we sit down, we critique what we did and what could we make better and then we move on. Yeah, so that's.
But it's, but it's definitely doable. So, and I, I think, and, you know, I think if, if, especially if our, if our whole board is behind this, I think it would be, I think it's going to be a really great, powerful town, like really a townwide community effort. So.
So you'll bring something forward to our next board meeting, a proposal?
Yes.
For us to get support and with a recommendation of funding?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Okay. Updates on the 40B projects. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you very much. See, I'll start off with 10 to 50 Main Street. So, so ZBA has a hearing coming up on Tuesday, August the 12th. So with regards to the Main Street project, they're going to be discussing the water and sewer flow. They're also going to be discussing further the architecture and landscaping. And I know that at the last hearing, I think ZBA had just had an opportunity to take a look at the architectural drawings, so they didn't really discuss it at that point. And then they're actually talking about potentially moving forward on a discussion on the waivers. So, just technically, when it's a 40B project and the application comes in, the applicant looks for waivers from certain zoning requirements that are in the zoning code. So, they'll start having a discussion about that. I did receive from the applicant environmental consultant, the latest remedial action plan. And I haven't had a chance to go through all of it yet, but one thing I did not necessarily see in that was the inclusion of a vapor... They have a vapor barrier, but not like a vapor mitigation system, like a radon system. And we are going to check in with DEP and EPA, because I believe that is something that they would like to see. If that is the case, I think it's definitely something that we should insist on including in the conditions.
Definitely.
For sure. And then they also, the applicant had also indicated that they anticipate filing with the Conservation Commission at some point in September. So, that is the update on that.
Michael, before you move on from them, can I just, you know... One of the questions that somebody gave me recently was about, you know, Mr. Angler had mentioned that he put, he had forwarded to the town answers to the questions that Mr. Winter brought up at a previous meeting, which, which I have reviewed. But many of those questions reference documents that were submitted.
Okay.
So, to me, doesn't, what, I'm not sure what that means. If a question was raised based on the submission, and it's, so it's not responded to, then where does that stand? Is that, you know, is that something that will become a condition now, or potentially a condition, or... But, I mean, I just didn't feel like answering questions by referencing some of their filings was necessarily helpful in getting the answer to those questions.
Didn't necessarily answer the question.
Yeah.
So, I think if the ZBA feels like they have requested information and that they're not getting it, that's something that they could certainly have a conversation about when they're deliberating, determining what the conditions are, for sure. Because that's, that's like a different ballgame. If the ZBA or the Conservation Commission, in fact, you know, if they're asking for information and the applicant is not providing that information, then how can you make a decision, a rational decision? You know, it sounds like there, you know, could be a game of chess going on with regards to that, which is just kinda like, let's keep it as finite into the documents that are prepared as possible, so there's not more extraneous information there. That's just conjecture on my part. But to answer your question, yes, I think that's something that they consider, they could consider if they don't get the answer to the questions that they have asked.
Right. And will Mr. Winter be providing that sort of feedback to the zoning board?
He should be. We, for a while, we were meeting, the planning team, it was actually before Jasmine had fully gone on board, and Attorney Winter and I were meeting just to kinda coordinate things. That has not happened in a couple of weeks, and I'm insisting now that we're gonna start incorporating those again, because I think those were just really, really helpful for everybody to just get on the same page. Including Brian. And so, you know, this is something that after this meeting, I could bring back to Brian, and I'd like to do that in a meeting setting, so everybody's hearing the same thing.
Right.
Based on what Claudia is saying, it's very circular, right? They give us documentation, we have questions about them, and they reference the documents that they've already given us.
Right. There's, because they're saying that the question that we have, right, isn't, is answered in that document, original documentation, which...
Obviously, we wouldn't be asking the question if the answer was in the documentation.
Yeah. And I think, you know, probably the applicant is, you know, the counter to that will probably be like, well, just because you're asking the question in a, same question in a different way does not constitute a different question.
But if you're not getting the...
But are we, I mean, are we asking, are we asking the question in a different way? So, that's the thing, right?
Exactly.
So, we just, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure some of those references would be maybe answers, but not all.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lengthy list of questions. It would be hard to imagine all of this.
And I would say if they're saying it's in the document, tell us what page, what paragraph, and how you're, how it's being answered in the document.
Like a citation.
Yeah.
Seriously. No. If you're gonna cite, if you're gonna cite the document, cite the document.
Yep, just put, I mean, use it like the page of what the report is.
That would be very helpful.
Sure. And I don't think these are like huge lifts on their part. I don't think these are unreasonable requests by any means. Any more questions about Main Street? Okay. So, moving on to Waverly. So, they will start talking about, well, they are going to respond, the applicant's going to respond to the water sewer peer review by Haley Ward at that meeting. So, that's going to be 61 Waverly Street. And then 55 West Union, they do plan on opening the hearing for that project. And just to remind everybody, since this is the newest of three 40Bs, this one is a four-story building that offers 116 rental units and 87 units of the, 87 of those units will be priced at market, and 29 would be income restricted.
At what, what percentage?
I believe, I believe it's 80%.
Is Mr. Dudley doing a, like, a presentation at the next meeting when they open the hearing, or is it not?
That is usually what happens, but I don't know for sure, like, I have not, you know, asked that direct question.
Just because that would be like a good opportunity for the public to hear more about the specifics of the project.
Yep. And although it's not a 40B project, see, the YMCA will be at ZBA as well, just because they're looking for variance on parking space size. So... So, that is the ZBA meeting and mainly the 40B projects. Thank you.
Just, I guess to follow up a little bit on that, you know, it, I found it kind of interesting tonight that we would be hearing a disaster plan, right? That would talk about the increasing, I think for flooding, what used to be one in a thousand years is now four in 20 years. And so, it just strikes me that, you know, the 10 to 60 Main in a flood plain, how do we just kind of ignore that? Or, I mean, I know there's somewhat of a plan, but moving vehicles out of there, 300-plus vehicles out of there, doesn't seem like much of a plan. In any case, so it just strikes me, you know, that it's just not well thought out. You know, I just wanna say, I recently listened to on WGBH from July 25th. It was a conversation with Congressman Ockingclass and a gentleman from Harvard, I think he's head of economics. And they were talking about the need that we have for housing, right, in Massachusetts. And they were talking about how we can't think of housing as housing for people that are here today. We have to think about housing for people for the, in the future, which I thought was a really good way to look at things. And, you know, they were, they had a couple of pretty, I mean, they were saying basically, we've gotta really go at this hard. We can't just go at it, you know, a little bit here and there. They talked about Fort Devon's property. They talked about brownfields that could maybe be ready and used for building single-family housing. They talked about after the war, after World War II, when people came home and many ranches were built, right? Single-family housing. And there's a town in Texas, which I don't usually, you know, model them, nonetheless, that has, has done some of these things. They've actually purchased resources from surrounding communities. So, if they're not big enough to have their own fire department, they've purchased resources and things like that. So, it was a very interesting discussion. I think anybody who's interested in thinking about housing and that, they would, they would benefit from it. I think there was, there was an article either today or yesterday in the Washington Post about housing. There's so much out there right now. And I, and I think the problem in Ashland is that, you know, I mean, just even on the very surface, as you say, Michael, nobody's moving to North Carolina to live in an apartment, right? And I think to talk about what potentially is some of these units, some of these, the apartment buildings, the impact on the community and on our infrastructure, and, you know, what does it do to our water? I mean, you talk about droughts. Well, if we can't get enough water now to, really to, you know, without being on all kinds of different levels of drought alert, right, then what are we doing? What are we doing? And, and I understand the government's push. I understand probably better than ever why it's so important to build additional housing. It's just that we need to do it right. It's, we're not gonna solve the problem just by, by throwing something at it that's been, we've been doing since 1969. Hasn't, hasn't the, you know, the minimal, it's really just such a minimal effort that we've made. And that's one of the problems, is if we had been doing better, then we wouldn't be in this predicament now. But let's do it right. Let's not, you know, destroy a downtown to, you know, for, or some other things. But, I mean, the infrastructure piece is huge, right? Where are you parking cars? It maybe doesn't seem important to people, but where are these people that live there? Where are they gonna put their cars? It's crazy, this, some of this stuff. So, in any case, I just, that's my editorial for this evening.
Well, I do wanna say, Claudia, that, you know, I hear you. And for me, who's relatively new to the board, you know, I think, I think we're talking about basically, you know, our housing production plan. Like, what does that look like? I think, you know, how do we, as a town, with our different committees and what we're charged with, how can we be creative about planning for the future? Like Claudia said, like, like the folks from Harvard and Jake Allenclos, I'm gonna mess up his name, had that conversation. You know, it's about, it's about really taking into consideration, as best we can at this point in time, you know, what, what those needs are gonna be. And to your point, Claudia, like, and it's, this isn't just on Ashland. I think this is nationally as well. You know, there hasn't, you know, you know, I don't think any community, many communities across the nation, until now, have realized that housing is, was, is an issue, and mostly because of production, particularly in the Northeast. I bet you it's probably not where it could be or should be, and that's why we're, we're seeing, like, in a lot of communities, this influx of building. So, the question is, going forward, how do we better plan for that? How can we be creative around that? And I think that's something as a town that we need to take a look at proactively, all of us, you know? And something we should keep in mind as we're going forward with these processes.
So, a couple of things. You mentioned the housing production plan. We had a housing production plan. We created our first housing production plan 10 years ago. And then, you know, I led that process, and we had, and we were fine. We had no 40Bs. We were having production, we were having housing being produced. Brandy then helped lead the second one. Again, we had a housing production plan. Unfortunately, parts of our housing production plan didn't happen, not because of the work of the town, but because of the developers that we were relying on to build the housing, right? UGC is a perfect parcel, right? That was supposed to be built. That would've helped us out. The parcel 501 Pond Street was supposed to be built, and that was gonna help us out. So, again, we, we did the work, and unfortunately, that's part of the process, right? Is sometimes you do the work, but even you can do the work and it doesn't happen. And the other, and this is a, a statistic that I've cited based on some of the work that I've done, is there was a time, I think it was like from 1990 to 2010, or 1980 to 2000, I forget where it was, where a large amount of housing was produced in the state of Massachusetts. The following 20 years, half of the amount of housing was built.
Right.
As a state, they, it wasn't done. And the, and then you add to that the economy, right? For a lot of developers, they're not building condos because it's not profitable. There's no long-term profit there. So, it's, you know, and unfortunately, we are not stuck, but we have to, you know, we have to do better. And again, I think we need to come back to our production, our housing production plan, so that we can say we've done what we need to do. And I would think if these three parcels, if these three projects get built, and we don't have much other single-family homes get built, then our numbers will stay where they are and will stay at 10%, right? Because that's the other thing. I, there was someone who was on the planning board 20 years ago, and she said, Ashland was at their 10%. Apparently, at one point, Ashland was at 10%, and then all the condos got built. And all of a sudden, they were not, we were not, the town was no longer at 10%.
There was no watchdog at that time to, to keep, to keep an eye...
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't in the forefront of people's thoughts.
And I would just add, I would just add about the housing production plan. Like, some of the things that we had put into the housing production plan was like to do an ADU bylaw, by right, which, as we know, the state has...
Took care of it for us.
Took care of it for us.
Yeah, that's great.
It, like, we had talked about doing an inclusionary zoning bylaw, which would mandate that everywhere in town had a certain percentage of affordable housing, you know? And we do have affordable housing overlays in places where we require 10% and things like that. But there's no, there's no blanket anything in town about affordable housing. So, the problem is, is when, you know, large things like Cirrus were built, it created a lot of units, but it wasn't a lot of affordable units, so it didn't help us on, on that front. And, you know, we had talked about in the housing production plan, trying to encourage more smaller developments and things like that. But the other part, the other problem is, you know, we need somebody to build that, to be able to afford to build that. And so, we had wanted to encourage mixed, more mixed-use housing. I think one of the issues that, like, we're seeing with a lot of these apartment complexes is it's more profitable to just build housing. Because, and, and we had done an economic development study, you know, years ago, that, you know, people ask all the time, "Oh, why don't you just put a blah there?"
Yeah, yeah.
You know, "We should, we should build this, and it should be more commercial."
We should have these businesses in town.
And not these businesses. Yeah, and it's like, okay, well, that's...
So, you know, mixed use incorporates the commercial, but, you know, basically, the housing on top subsidizes the commercial. So, so, if you're, if you're looking at a 40B project where you can circumvent things, like, you know, a mixed-use overlay, or, you know...
But I guess the other thing that has always been an interesting conversation to me is the people who say, "Well, affordable housing at 25% isn't real affordable housing, because you get to count all of it, but only 25..." So, I mean, and I've had that discussion with people here in town, right? Who are like, "Well, if we put in 100 units, 25% of them are affordable, and we get to count 100. Well, that still only gives us 25 units." And my response to that is, "These are the guidelines we're getting from the state, so let's push for that 25%. If we're building a building of 20 units or 100 units, push for that 25%, because that's gonna help us get to our number." Because now, we have a couple of newer projects, right, that it's only 10% affordable. So, you add the Chestnut Street Apartments, that's 180 units, but only 10% of affordable. So, our housing stock has gone up by this, but our affordable number has only gone up by 18 units. So, that's, that's as a community, what we have to have that conversation.
Right.
Right? I mean, and, and, and it takes a while to understand that and learn that.
Right.
Right? When I was first on the select board, I didn't understand that we should've pushed Cirrus to do 25% affordable, and then we could count all of it. I'm like, "Oh, well, they're willing to do 10." You know, that's great. We're gonna get extra. So, it's, it's a full educational process that is hard, and for a lot of the community members, they catch little pieces of it, right? All we can do is keep talking about it.
So, I would say also, you know, once we get through this 40B thing that we're in, and we're... I'm sorry?
Tsunami.
Tsunami. That's the magic word. Um, once we get, once we get through the 40Bs and we're in safe harbor, we need to have a real discussion about what's next.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's, I think, because we had talked about, I mean, we have talked about this for years, like, you know, and people, people didn't understand what we meant by it, but it's like, you know, you know, we're subject to 40B. We're vulnerable to 40B. People don't understand what that means and that this is what that means.
This is what that means.
Exactly what it means.
So, so now, like, from my perspective, it's like we, we can't, we can't control what's happening right now, but we can absolutely come up with a plan for how we're going to, how we're going to go forward after this.
I think it's going to be, we're going to have to redo our housing production plan because it'll have been almost five years. You know, once these units are done, where, you know, wherever we land, we have to look again at our housing production plan and put things in place that will allow us to control our future as best as we can and find those partners to work with, right?
And that was the point I was trying to make, you know. And first off, I want to thank, thank you, Yolanda and Brandy for kind of filling in some of the collective history because people are, you know, probably like, "What happened?" You know, and so, you know, I think that's, that's important. But like, that was my point exactly. Like, you know, once this is, is over, you know, we have a real opportunity to, you know,
Craft.
Craft the kind of future that's going to benefit the townspeople here in Ashland. And, and, and make sure that, you know, we do have affordable housing and make sure that, you know, we remain a, a, a safer, welcoming community for folks.
Right.
But also making sure that we're growing in a smart and sustainable way, um, that's not going to, you know, tax us, not, I shouldn't use that word, but not going to throw a lot of burden, unexpected burdens on infrastructure and all these other things that we're going to have to figure out because.
No, you're absolutely correct, yeah.
Which, which is why it was very interesting. So as part of the comprehensive plan, right, our consultants really tried to get us to do a goal about smart growth and changing the zoning in certain parts of downtown. And there was a lot of pushback from members of the community.
An animus pushback.
Like, no one wanted that as a goal. Not that we don't want smart-growth housing, but we as a, my feeling, my understanding from our community is, we don't want any goal that talks about more housing right now until we get through the current process.
I mean, I, I can understand that, but on the other hand, we have to plan for the future because we, we can't like not discuss this, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, correct. But the way they, the way they were pushing it to the plan, it was like, "No, you know, we, we need to get through what we're getting through."
Sure. They, I think they also thought that like anything that had smart growth or anything in it would get nixed by the public. Like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have town support for anything that talked about.
Smart growth.
Smart growth.
Well, we could have dumb growth instead, but the, I'm being, I'm being facetious, but.
The sense was, you know, no growth after.
No growth. But zero, zero growth is not realistic.
Zero growth is not realistic.
And I can't remember, um, I can't remember where I heard this quote, but it's true. And a lot of, a lot of planners will tell you this, like, you know, if your community isn't growing, then it's dying.
Correct.
You know, so, you know, I don't, it's, so I think that, and that's true. And, you know, statistics and data bear that out. So we need to make sure that, again, Ashland retains its character, retains and builds community, but in a way that we can hopefully, I mean, we can't control everything. And to your point, like, you know, we can't, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't, we can't account for every eventuality, but we can put a fairly, you know, we can, from what we've learned, you know, we're a little smarter and we, we, we're already creative, you know, utilizing folks, utilizing folks in town's opinions, you know, folks who serve on boards and committees. I'm confident that we're going to be able to put together a really great housing production plan and, and plan for, you know, a great future for the town.
The problem is, you put together a smart-growth plan, which I think we'd probably say that you, Yolanda, had done and you, Brandy, had done with your committees. And then it's all for naught, right?
Well, I mean.
Without our. I wouldn't say it was all for naught. I think the discussions that we had, the plan that, because the, for the first housing production plan, it worked well. We were able to create housing. We were able to keep ourselves in state, in safe harbor. We then brought it over to the second housing production plan and, and things went sideways.
Yeah, well, there was a pandemic.
What I was just going to say, a lot of things that came upon.
The pandemic and other things that we had no control over. I mean, UGC is a perfect example.
Yeah, I agree. But I'm saying, so if you create another plan and it has a UGC thing happen, then, you know, you're out of luck again.
And that happens, but I think, you know, I think some of the things, and I think, you know, some of the things that we've learned throughout this process is, you know, first off, we, we can't predict the future, but we can plan, we should plan as best we can and we did.
Yeah.
I think communication around this process is critical. I think we've learned a lot about communication throughout this process, not just, you know, between boards and committees, but between the town and townsfolk to make sure that they understand what's happening and why and what, you know, what steps are being taken and how and why.
Before a developer comes into town, they're doing their homework way before, you know. They've got a year, a year and a half of, you know, research that's going on in, in what Ashland is all about. They check the bylaws. They just, they, they'll check all of that.
Right.
And unfortunately, some certain bylaws need to be tweaked. 10% baseline?
Well, we don't even have a 10%.
I, I know, we don't. I mean.
Oh, you mean, you mean the affordable housing, 10%? Yeah, but that's a state-level Joe.
Like an inclusionary zoning?
An inclusionary zoning.
Inclusionary, again, inclusionary zoning was talked about, but there was, there was pushback and people.
Which is somewhat unfortunate because it wouldn't have hurt if we had those on, on, on.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of discussion. There are people who feel that inclusionary zoning don't work if you were, but anyway, we're, we're going, we're going a little off.
No, but I think, no, I, I, we are, but I think this is a good discussion. And I think there are some opportunities to have some good conversations with, with the community about this on a path forward.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm, I'm looking forward to having those conversations as we.
And they can find us at the market, at the.
Oh, yeah, that's right. To figure out, exactly. But, and, exactly. So, but yeah, I think.
March 16th, right?
No.
I mean, August.
It's August 16th?
August 16th, I think, isn't it?
I didn't think we had an August date.
I think we have a September date.
I thought we were September.
Yeah, we have a September and October date, I think.
Oh, okay.
But many of us go to the farmer's market. If you see one of us, grab us and have a conversation.
Yep. And we'll, we'll have plenty of structured conversations about this in the future as well. So I'm looking forward to that.
Same here. All right, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
There, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along. As we have, I don't want to run over the 10 o'clock thing, but we may have to.
Yeah, I think we're going to.
Okay, update. Town manager report. Update on Keefe Tech budget and capital assessment.
Sure. Um, so I had provided some information into your packet. You see that the Keefe Tech, um, the regional school was invited to start the MSBA process. They included in your packet was also some documentation that had listed in there a vote for town meeting, a potential vote for town meeting. Um, I wanted to let you know that's not applicable for this scenario because Keefe Tech, and actually I'll have to give Superintendent Evans and the school committee a lot of credit. Uh, they did some very good, uh, planning and they're actually going to be able to conduct the feasibility study without going out to bond. They actually have the cash in hand. So, um, that is good news for the member towns. Um, and what is also good news is Superintendent Evans did let me know that, um, based on a budget reduction that they had made, that the FY 26, FY 26 assessment for Ashland is now going to be reduced by almost $26,000. So not a huge amount, but certainly going in the right direction.
Is that because few, fewer students are going to be attending?
No, it was just, um, the way they decided to do the, um, the financing for the MSBA feasibility study.
Oh, okay.
They don't necessarily, they had some money put aside in some savings and so they didn't necessarily need the money from FY 26. Um, but also, I think I'd mentioned at a previous meeting that one of the things that they had talked about doing, meeting Keefe Tech, was to pursue something called apportionment. Um, and the Department of Education has determined that Keefe Tech will now start, well, not now, but in the future, start moving towards a lottery-based system. And so the fear that the school committee and Superintendent Evans had was that, given the size of Framingham, um, that there was a potential that Framingham could end up with all of the seats for Keefe Tech. And so not only is that, uh, you know, an equality and equity and fairness issue for towns and, you know, the communities and their kids, but also from a budgetary standpoint, it just becomes a nightmare because you can never predict from one year to the, to the next, kind of, you know, what your baseline is going to be.
So with, with respect to that, if that happens, if the scenario happens that Framingham students fill all those lottery positions and shuts out Ashland, we're still paying an assessment for a school that, uh, students aren't utilizing?
Um, you know, potentially, I'll, I'll have to look a little bit into that, but the apportionment piece that I had mentioned earlier, that is going to reserve some seats for each member town. And so, um, again, Superintendent Evans and Keefe Tech has pursued that. Um, and so what is going to need to happen is there will, um, be a fall town meeting vote for each of the towns and the city of Framingham to vote to participate in that apportionment process as well, which is something I would assume that we would want to, to move forward with, to ensure that, you know, we have at least some seats each year for Keefe Tech.
So that, some seats, so are you saying that, and I'll just use round figures just for, for an example. Say the assessment is $500,000 and we had, in the past, we've had maybe 10 students. Now with this new process, we only have two. Are we still spending $500,000 on those two students to, to attend Keefe Tech?
I don't believe we would, Joe, but I don't know exactly what that figure would be.
Right. So it would be a smaller assessment then, based on the number of students, I would think, right?
Correct.
And this would only be incoming freshmen that they would do this lottery for, correct?
Incoming, correct, correct. So once you're in, you know.
You're in.
You're, you're in. Okay.
So, so when they set aside seats for, for different towns, is it based on, like, how many seats we would normally have?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I don't have the details and I'm sure that's going to be.
But, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. When, when would we get those details, Michael?
Um, I, I will reach out to Superintendent Evans and ask him, um, exactly when. But he just said, uh, you know, they're working with their council to finalize what that language would look like and they'd be reaching out very soon.
Okay.
And, um.
And would that go into effect like fall 2026 that they're looking for?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway, that is the Keefe Tech, uh, Keefe Tech, um, update.
The reason for doing that, just the, the reason they're going to a lottery system is some communities, right, weren't, they weren't being equally represented. So now here's an instance where it sounds like it's going to have the opposite impact. But I think that the reason they did that was to try to, um, be fairer for all students.
Yeah, when you try to take a statewide approach and apply it to individual ones, it's really, really difficult. Um, Catherine, would you want to give an update on the capital plan, just kind of where we are with that process?
So back in, I believe it was, um, spring, maybe early spring, um, department heads submitted their requests for, um, fiscal year 26, their capital requests. Uh, we have for 2026, fiscal year 26, we have about 49 requests. Last month, Michael and I met with all of the department heads and went over all of the requests. Um, and then we also asked them to prioritize their requests. Um, and so they have done that and we have that list. And at the moment, we are waiting for, um, that number, the, the free cash number. So that's, that's the status of where we're at right now.
Does that include requests from the school department as well?
Yes, so school and town.
And when you guys have that sort of prioritized and finalized with the amount that's coming through free cash, um, we'll have, we'll have that discussion here.
Well, we'll have, we'll have the list. And that's, so we'll have a prioritized list, right? And then once we get the free cash number, we'll be able to see what we can do within that list.
Okay. Would it be possible, um, to have, to kind of think long, longer term than just one year, to say, "Okay," you know, like, to see the whole priority list? Because I, because I know if, if, if there's 46 items on this list, um, and obviously the priorities are going to change from year to year, but I think, you know, it would be good to kind of start more of like a longer term, like a, like a three-year approach, like my personal, you know, it would be good to, to kind of have that.
So we.
Five-year.
Five-year, okay. Yes, it is a five-year plan. So when they put in their requests, we do have five years listed. So I'm just talking about fiscal year 26.
Okay. But it would be good to see the five years.
Absolutely.
Because I think that would be helpful, for, at least for me, so.
Do we, as part of the capital plan, do we sometimes say, "Okay, we're not going to use all of the funds this year because we have a larger thing like the fields that need to be replaced, that we want to sort of accumulate funds"? Have we done that before? As a way to pay for some of these larger projects, rather than say, "Okay, we have X amount in capital funds. We're going to use it all this year and then we're not, we're not then saving for some of these bigger projects to do as capital projects."
We've done that before. Like, we do have a capital stabilization fund, um, that I think after we purchased, um, the land surrounding the public safety building, it doesn't have that much in there now, but occasionally, yes, we have put more money in there.
Okay.
Not necessarily for, like, targeting specific projects, but knowing that we'll have bigger ones coming down the road. Um, and then if they're really, really big projects, you know, the way our policies are written is we look at, at debt and specifically excluded debt, depending on how, how big that project is.
Right. I just know that right now, we have a, we have a lot of excluded debt between the public safety building and the Mindes, as well as some other projects that still haven't completely come off. So again, it's one of those five-year plans, 10-year plans, looking at what we're going to be spending and when, so that we and the community have a better understanding of what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Okay. Um, so moving on to the Niantz extraction system. Um, so many of you are familiar with, um, the, the way the EPA and DEP has gone about starting to, or trying to remove, uh, the contamination at the source point which leads into the groundwater plume is actually through extraction wells. And so one of the things that they have done in the last few years, and this was under the Biden administration and the Infrastructure Act, is, uh, more money went into that project to develop a much more robust extraction system. Um, and so what they've done is they have actually, one of the wells, the one near Worcester Air Conditioning, they've completely redone that, that extraction system. Um, the one that is near the Nyah Call system, um, it's not producing, uh, much at all of what they call Dean Apple, which is the chemical that does lead, or the chemicals, I should say, that does lead to, um, the groundwater plume. So anyway, they are moving forward. They're going to convert that to a monitoring well. Um, and then the other treatment option that they utilize is what they call ISCO or In situ, uh, chemical treatment, um, where they actually extract the Dean Apple and they take it to a lab and they figure out which chemical reagents would actually serve to basically neutralize the chemicals in the ground. And then they go back in and inject that, um, that neutralizing agent into the ground. And so they've been doing that process as well. So that's moving along.
Cool. Could we put, um, some communications together about this? Because I know the last we had heard was we were waiting for, for EPA to kind of start and we didn't know sort of what the, what the timeline was going to look like.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think, I think the public would, would really like to know that the stuff is underway and it's still continuing, especially with, um, federal cuts and knowing that it's still on track. And if we have like a, any sort of timeline from, from, um, you know.
And what is the expected outcome? So they're going to insert this neutralizing So they're going to insert this neutralizing agent? And is that then expected to completely neutralize it? Or is it, I mean, because the barrels are still sitting there under the ground, right? They're in a pit, but.
Well, that's, that's up on the, on the hill.
That's under the cap.
I understand that, but, and this is near Worcester, near Worcester Air on Pleasant Street. So by doing that, by doing the neutralizing, what is that doing for the environment? What is that doing for the, you know, the people whose, whose homes are over those plumes and?
So, so what happens is there's the Dean Apple, which is dense non-aqueous phase liquid, the chemical junk, if you will, that's in the bedrock, right? And so the groundwater flows through, basically collects that and then creates the groundwater plume downstream.
Right.
So if you inject that chemical at the source point, it neutralizes basically the toxicity of those chemicals. So what happens is over time, that flow, that plume will be cleaner and cleaner and cleaner.
Okay.
And that's the objective. At the same time, you're extracting Dean Apple out of the ground as well. So that's less that needs to be treated.
It's a two-step process that they're doing.
But just recall, remember, I don't know if you remember when we were at Ashland High School and they were, EPA was presenting their plan?
Yeah.
They did say that this plan, I mean, it's not going, we're not going to totally remove the chemicals from that site for a couple hundred years, which is not uncommon for, for, you know, sites of this nature. I mean, basically Kendall Square is basically is a super fun site. Basically has the same, has the same thing. So, you know, it's how do you contain, how do you monitor, how do you make sure that that does stay contained? You make sure you know the pathway that's going to cause people to get sick. You make sure you have the appropriate mitigation in place, while at the same time, you're making, you're cleaning up.
Yeah, maybe it might be good to, I'm just thinking, like, you know, you know, this is under your town manager report, but I think maybe we should have sort of like a bigger, whether it's a few slides or something, on a future agenda where we really talk about, you know, maybe, maybe EPA has something for us that we can put out, or we bring them in.
I think we should bring the EPA in.
Yeah, because it's, it's complicated and it's something that's on everybody's minds. And I think it probably deserves like, you know, some, some discussion.
More detailed discussion and update to the community.
Especially if that's heading towards a, towards a certain development.
Yeah, and I think it's, and I think honestly, like I think this is all really good news. Because I think it's, I think it's very good news, actually, that this is moving forward, so.
Yeah, it is. It's good.
Yeah, I think that'd be great if they could come in and give us an update themselves, yeah.
And then I had also provided to you just kind of that project evaluation matrix after I'd received the feedback and everything at the retreat. Put together a memo that tried to explain some things. Yolanda, you look at, I know you've got some questions.
Am I the only one who did not quite get what we were looking to, I mean, looking to do? I, I, I read it, I read, I looked at the spreadsheet, I read the document, I even asked, I'm like, so I, I, I will say I did not do it because I didn't understand it and.
I, I didn't need you to do anything. I just needed you to look at it and provide some feedback. Does this reflect what we talked about and everything? If you're good with that, then I can give you projects to start actually scoring it.
Okay, because my, based on what I read and what I saw, my understanding was you were trying to get us to put our priorities next to the list of, right? Isn't that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear. Yes, so what I provided with you was just the template, if you will, right? That we talked about that has the different categories.
And didn't you want us to put 1 through 10 next to those categories?
For each project that we have. So like if we look, if we're looking at the Upper Charles Trail, so what you would do is take the Upper Charles Trail and for each of those categories, you would score it based, I think it's page two, you know, we've got the, you know, the 1 through 10 evaluation. Does that, does that make it, make sense a little more?
I, for some reason, it's just not making sense to me.
Okay.
So. So the, you gave us a spreadsheet and you had all of our names. And the list that was there, are, were we supposed to say how, what the percentage of each of those lists we, we thought? No, okay.
So let's just take the first, let's just take the top of the sheet, right?
Yeah.
And it has strategic alignment, which is 25%. So that's 25% of the total score.
Okay.
And so the first part is select board and town manager goals. And so each one of those goals, I put like a definition right next to it. And so when we do have a project, like let's just say, again, the Upper Charles Trail, like Claudia here, I went by alphabetical order. Claudia, you would say, okay, how does, you know, the Upper Charles Trail relate to, or fit into community organizations and cultural resources, you know, between a 1 and a 10, right? And you would just go down the list that way and score it.
Oh.
Is that now, is it clicking now?
So then, so if it's the Upper Charles Trail and I'd go to downtown and I would say, what percentage I, between 1 and 10, where do I feel the Upper Charles Trail relates to downtown?
Well, yeah, how, how does it impact downtown from your perspective? And, you know, you could, and it's going to have a level of subjectivity to it, obviously. And that's where, you know, that's where your judgment comes in.
So we're going to be doing each of these against every project?
No, I'm, if you're okay with the way this looks, I will provide you a list of projects. It will not be that whole list, it will probably be some of the major ones. The others, because I think the others, a lot of the others in that list were already kind of in progress of doing or they have to be done. You know, we're talking about the major project list. So I think the ones that, you know, are going to require a lot of resources, we'd take those and go ahead and score those.
Can I ask a question about the color? What, I was going to say, why are some things green and some things white?
Yeah, in the memo I explained, so remember, the board's not going to score all of the categories, just the ones that we had talked about, and so those are highlighted in green.
Oh, okay, all right. I see that, but I missed, I missed that in the memo.
We're not going to, we're not going to give a measure for the financial factors or the feasibility.
Staffing availability.
Okay, so anything under financial factors, we're not going to give a determination to that, okay?
Okay, so we're just, okay.
Staffing availability, local department, you're, we're not giving a, we're not putting our.
And, and 1 is low and 10 is high, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you want a higher score if you feel it is more impactful on a certain.
Correct.
The individual, you're going to give us the individual projects? And where are those going to be? On another tab or?
Yeah, I can, that's probably the easiest thing to do is just put them on another tab.
And just say which, which.
And how about I go ahead and do like an example for you?
Yeah, sure.
I'll go ahead and score. I think I provided one in the retreat packet, which again, was the preliminary one before our discussion.
I think a newer example would be helpful. So let me just make sure I understand what you're saying here. You, you're basically giving us a list of, basically the, as defined, you're saying like the new projects. So new projects being that they are not in progress and they are not deemed as essential. So is that, I'm just trying to get a definition of the project list that you're providing us right now.
Yeah, and I probably, I misspoke when I said new projects. I think there's some, some of the larger resource-intensive projects that are currently underway. And then I hope we can use this also when new projects come across our plate.
Okay, so these are just, so these are for large projects that have or have not been started?
Some will have been started and some will not have been started.
Okay.
Like the Upper Charles Trail is a massive project, Valentine, massive project. And even though we have done work on each of those, we need to make a decision, you know, there is, we will not be able to do both of those moving forward at, at this point with, given our availability of resources. Need to make a choice between the one or the other, and I'm just taking those two. Obviously, I'm talking about scoring more than that.
And when we say, and when we say talk about like not doing it, we're talking about pushing out the timeline on these things.
Correct.
Exactly. I think that, that's, that's a very important point because I think, but we're saying like what we're going to be looking, what we're going to be putting resources towards over the next cycle, next 12 months. So that's an important definition as well. It's not that we're canceling anything, it's just that any projected work may not happen in this particular cycle, but will be reevaluated on the next cycle.
Exactly.
For feasibility.
So things like the, the, let's see, financial factors aren't to play a role in our.
Like the board wouldn't, wouldn't score, the board would score the ones that are in green, which I think is still predominantly, yes, but, but yes, you're correct.
Because couldn't that ultimately end up bumping something out?
It could potentially, it could.
So I think to Claudia's point, like if that's the case, I think that's something that we definitely have to kind of examine and take into account when we're making our decision and get some, we'll probably have to have some, some Q and A around that if that happens, or actually, any of these factors that we're not scoring, we'll have to have some, you know, extended discussion so we understand what the issues are.
Right. Because it almost feels like we're making choices that are kind of.
You are making choices.
In a vac, but it's in vacuum. Like I feel like I don't have all the information or I'm not scoring based upon what would seem to be critical information, right?
So I guess that's, to Claudia's point, so we're going to score this and then you guys are going to provide input on the things in white.
Well, we'll score all of it just because we'll have a sense of everything on the staff level.
Okay, so you're going to score, you're going to score everything in parallel to how we're scoring, okay? And then we will have all of the data to take a look at and see where, where the staff kind of comes in on things, where we've averaged out as a board, and then have that, and hash that out. Is that sort of the plan?
That, that is the plan. And again, this, this wasn't meant to be like completely definitive, but it's, it's.
Directional.
Directional to help us, you know, guide this.
So does that mean we're going to have a tab for every project that you want us to score?
Pretty much, yeah, like each of these would be.
Right, so, but so the guideline, the information on the left will be there and it'll say Valentine property on the top. And then we have to score what we think of each of those, each of those items in green. Okay. I'd like to make a recommendation that, and only because I think it's better if we don't look at each other's work beforehand, that we each get it and then the combined data gets combined. But then I'd like to see all of the information. I don't want to see just the combined score. I'd like to see what everyone thought so that if we need to have a discussion because it's a half a point or a point difference, we can sort of discuss it. Does that make sense? Does that make sense to you guys?
It does make sense and I think we're, I mean.
To safeguard.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is getting us on that, on the way to that discussion. I don't think this is a definitive decision, like any.
Oh, no, 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 it's not a definitive.
Scores aren't going to decide what we do. It's going to give us a good position about what we need to discuss and how we can prioritize, how we move forward. So this is kind of like the first step along that.
But I agree with you, Yolanda, like I don't, I, I want to have like, I don't want my perspective to be skewed by anyone else's and open meeting law probably.
Right.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
You know, we could probably turn it into like a form.
You don't want any biases coming into your own.
Correct, yeah.
It's only after the fact.
Yeah, it'll be good to see everybody's feedback.
So about how many projects are you thinking about, Michael?
I, I was going to say no more than 10. Yeah, I was going to say no more than 10.
And what is the timeline that you think will get this?
I was hoping to get you the projects before September so that you can go ahead and score and we can look at maybe the second meeting in September.
Okay.
I would like to have just a full project list, if you can distribute that as well.
I think we had one in our retreat package.
But, yeah, we did, but I just want to make sure that we have any updates or any kind of changes. So an updated full project list when you, when you distribute that, that would be great.
And what I would say is if the project is 95% done, I would take it off the project list. Because we're not, I mean, for us to, for us to review, right? Unless you want to see them all, but my feeling is if, if it's, you know, like I think about the sidewalk on 135, I believe we saw that on the project list.
And it's highlighted as like completed.
Completed, yeah.
So I, I can, I will provide you with the, with the.
The master list, yeah.
And then I'll provide you a smaller list that you can apply to this.
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
And we'll try it. And it's sounding a little bit more resource-intensive than it did at the retreat, but.
It certainly does.
But we will, but we'll try it and if, you know, if we need to tweak it, if we need to, then it's an iterative process. I certainly don't think this is totally.
We'll figure it out.
That makes more sense now that we discussed it, because I was looking at this and.
Yeah, in hindsight, I should include the example.
What do I do with this?
Yeah, that was helpful.
Michael, just one more thing on that. Would it make more sense, and I, I don't know, because I'm not sure I fully grasp exactly what we're doing here, but would it make more sense to create a Google form? Then everybody's information is, ends up in a spreadsheet, so you don't have to try to combine that information?
Yeah, we're going to try to do that. Yeah, and then that will keep it separate, I think, for everybody is there.
And then we all see the combined when it's done.
I know, I'm not sure if, because it, it seems like it's a subcategory, right? So I'd have to see what you want the spreadsheet to look like and then.
It might be. Claudia, is the Google form accurate?
Well, it's just sometimes it makes things easier. No, I think it, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it depends.
Well, it's a lot better than, than us like trying to take your individual spreadsheets and copying and pasting.
Oh, yeah.
I know there's going to be like, that's going to be difficult.
I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to.
Go past 10.
Go past 10 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
If not, we don't do board reports.
Well, I got a few, I just got a couple reminders.
It's 10 o'clock, it's literally 10 o'clock.
It is 10 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, great, Mike.
Okay, one thing is I think Susan had sent out just a reminder for the tri board meeting. If you just haven't had a chance to put in for the doodle poll, that would be great. A number of downtown businesses are organizing a downtown after dark event on August 22nd and from 5 to 9, so please be on the lookout for information about that. I think Lisa Churchill has taken the lead from blush in terms of advertising, so that's really great. I, yeah.
Yeah, it's already, they're already advertising it.
I, I just want to give an incredible amount of kudos to the Ashland Police Department and their partners, Ashland Fire, DPW, and all the vendors and businesses and organizations, other agencies that came in and participated in Public Safety Night last night. It was absolutely incredible. It was just a community event that, you know, it was, it was full from like 5:30 to 7:30 when I left. And everybody was on the same page. And that was one of the things that just, you know, really fills my bucket, as we, as we like, fills my cup. Manny Toscano, one of our newer officers, took the lead in organizing this all by, all. He organized it with a lot of help, Sergeant Rocky and everybody in the police. I mean, we had basically all of our officers there, some off-duty, a lot of our firefighters, off-duty, DPW personnel.
With their families, which was so cool to see.
Such a family event, so I, I know it conflicted with the, with the summer concerts and, you know, maybe next year, because there will be a next year, you know, we can do that, but just kudos to them. And I'm just, I'm incredibly proud of just, not just the event, but the department that they've become to kind of turn that around. And then unfortunately. And then, um, unfortunately, I have to end on a sad note. One of our longtime volunteers, Diane Hanson, she passed away. Diane was a volunteer at the community center, was a volunteer at the clerk's office, was a member of the Ashland Lions, or Greater Ashland Lions, I should say. Diane fought cancer for 30 years. And that woman, as frail as she could be, looked sometimes, had the spirit of a lion. I mean, it was just amazing, she was always positive, just a real role model for anybody. So she is going to be missed by a lot of people. So I'll just, uh, you know, end on, on that sad note.
Wonderful, wonderful person and always had a smile on her face when you went up, because she was a bank teller down here. Always had a smile on her face. Never knew anything. So, yeah. This bank, I guess God opened up a new bank. Thank you, Michael. We're a family, God, God bless. All right, board reports. Mr. Yolanda.
Okay. So I was also at the public safety building, public safety night last night, it was a great event. I was there interviewing people and we're putting a story together for Around the Clock. It was just, the energy was, was so nice to see. I had a policy meeting, getting some updates on things that are going on in Beacon Hill. It's crazy understanding what they're trying to do up there, but a couple of things coming up that I'd like to share, on Tuesday, the 12th of August, the Metro West Chamber, Ashland Business Association and another, and other business associations have their annual barbecue event on, at the Outdoor YMCA Center. It's free for ABA members and if people are interested, we can see about getting people to go, it's always a great event. And then just some performances coming up, Hopkinton Center for the Arts, they're doing the musical Footloose, and that's being performed on Friday and Saturday, uh, August 8th and 9th, as well as the 15th and 16th. It's a fun musical, if you know the movie, and some great Ashland kids are involved and performing, so it's a lot of fun. And then on the 23rd and 24th of August, they have their Play Pint in a Pie, and those are all newly written plays and then a lot of local actors participate. And I think last year, I don't know what the lineup is this year, there was actually a local writer who had their play performed as part of that. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Makita.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was delightful to be able to be at the farmer's market a few weeks ago, sitting with yourself and Yolanda at the select board table. Heard a lot of great things, a lot of great questions from our illustrious residents, always fantastic to interact with them. Did a little checking on those dates, uh, we're going to be back out there on September 6th and again on October 4th, so please come by and say hi, we do want to speak with you, uh, find out what's going on, uh, and what you're concerned about here in town. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for, uh, covering my committee meeting with the Historical Commission, I'm sure we'll hear more about that in a minute, but I do know that a couple of things that they've, that they have approached me with, uh, and perhaps you have updates, uh, but, um, they do want to look at the possibility of getting a historical deed restriction so they can, they can apply for CPC funds for the village burial ground, um, and the wall repair issue. Uh, so I, I am scheduled to, to meet with the chair of that subcommittee later this month, a couple of weeks, but, uh, to get caught up on that. Only other thing is, uh, Yolanda and I had worked on some of the committee, uh, process improvements, uh, we still have, uh, a few other things that we need to do. I know we recommended some preliminary changes which are in effect now, but, um, I will add that, uh, we were approached by a member of the community, uh, who serves on a board committee, thanking us for our work and making sure that we are taking those recommendations from those committees and those committee chairs to improve the process. This is just the first step and, uh, we've got more work to do, so, um, we're going to get back to it and, uh, we'll be, uh, providing updates, uh, as we go along. That is all I have right now.
Thank you, Makita.
Thank you.
Claudia.
Thank you, I, I was very sad that I couldn't make it to the public safety event last night, I wasn't feeling well, but I know, Yolanda, you interviewed my, uh, daughter and her husband and I'm not sure, my grandson said too much, but, um, they, they said it was. They said it was really fabulous, so, uh, and, and, you know, I've never had a tour of the fire station or police station, the public safety building, so I, I was anxious to try to go, but in any case, I didn't make it.
Unfortunately, it was not at the public safety building.
Oh, well, I would have been in the wrong place.
So we were very disappointed.
We, we could probably make that happen.
No, I know, I know. Oh, where was it?
That's the middle school parking lot.
Oh, God, I would have been in the wrong place too.
You'd be like, this is not.
Hopefully I would have looked before I went, right? So, in any case, but, uh, I did hear it was really a great event, so thank you to them, I echo. And then, um, I did have occasion to visit the Holliston Historical Society and their barn on Monday with, um, with Carl Hackinson and get a look at it. It really isn't too different than where our current barn is, except that maybe electricity and I think they added some bathrooms on the back.
Bathroom and kitchen.
And a kitchen.
That they added in the late 70s, early 80s.
Things that if we did move forward with the house, um, we might not need to, um, you know, because of the proximity to the barn, we might not need to do those things in our barn. But in any case, um, it was just a good thing, he had made plans to go there and so I just, I went with him and, uh, you know, it was, it was good to see, because I didn't realize how rustic that barn is over there.
Very nice.
It's very, very rustic, so, uh, which was heartening to me because ours is very rustic, so, um, and that's all I have, thank you.
At some point, I'd like to see that, I haven't seen that yet myself, so at some point, I definitely need to see that.
I should have taken some pictures.
Yeah.
If you see there's cars out front, you just stop and you ask. That's what I did one time.
Caretaker that lives in the house.
Yeah.
So you might be able to, and actually, well, I don't know if I should say it publicly, but I think, I think there's a door that's always.
And that is owned, and that is owned by the Historical Society.
It's not owned by the town, it's owned by a private.
Private entity.
Ms. Berandy.
So I don't have too much, um, thank you guys for holding down the four at office hours at the farmer's market. I have been enjoying some family time before my kid leaves for college, so, um, I haven't been around as much the last couple of weeks, but, um, as we talked about earlier, we're, you know, embarking on this pumpkin fest journey and, um, I'm sure at some point in the next two months, I will literally pull out all my hair, but, um, I think it'll be good.
Think positive.
I'm thinking positive. No, I mentioned.
It took 36 years for this to happen.
There you go, there you go. No, but I'm, I'm looking forward to, to, um, to working on this and, uh, I think it's just, I think it, it's one of those feel-good things, so I'm excited about it. So, um, so that's, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. It is a fun thing to do and is a feel-good thing, especially when the day, if you have great weather and it goes off without a hitch, you just, it's a sense of accomplishment and it's just, you feel proud about it because you put all the time and effort into it, believe me, you'll enjoy it immensely.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Joe, before you go, so if we're supposed to have select board days, select board hours on Saturday, October 4th, we may want to adjust that if we're going to be hosting the.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I could, I can, I can check in with, and see if we can swap days with another group.
That's actually a really good point.
That's a really, that's actually.
It's a really good point.
Yep. We're not amoebas, we can't split.
Because we can't do, we can't be.
Yep, all right, so I am going to find out who else has off, uh, who else has community tent hours, um, either the, on some end of the, you know, maybe the following weekend or whatever, and, um, see if we can swap with them.
Not a bad idea.
Okay. That's a good catch, Yolanda. Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
Uh, just quickly, um, the farmer's market was a great time, a lot of wonderful people there, food was awesome. We're still, we're still selling, uh, Ashland Day fundraiser for the corn up at Lucky Farms and be honest with you, we can't keep, we can't keep the corn in the cooler, you better get there early. I mean, we're doing four bags, four bags a day, which is absolutely crazy.
What's the price for the corn, Joe?
Um, it, it varies.
Okay.
Per, per number, uh, but I think it's like, I think it's $11 or $10 for, for a dozen, I'm not, not.
Oh, wow, okay.
But it's, uh, yeah, you hungry? Go buy some, no, it's, they're probably closed then. Anyway, I had the opportunity to be with Yolanda on Sunday. We, we went to the, uh, went to the Indian Temple and they did their blessing of their new chariot. The chariot is massive, uh, it's not a Ben-Hur chariot, which, Michael was, I was getting that impression that it was going to be one of those, you know, two horses, no, no, this thing is at least a 15 Clydesdale unit. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there are pictures, yeah.
But it's beautiful.
So sorry I couldn't be there.
All I can tell you, it's over, over five tons, close to it. Oh, it's massive, it's massive. Yeah, that's how high it is.
It came over from India in pieces.
And it's inlaid in, in gold, it's just absolutely stunning.
No. No.
There are two in the United States, one's in Pennsylvania and the other one's in Ashland, Massachusetts. Yeah.
But it was a very special occasion and, um, I had the opportunity then to go in the temp, in the temple afterwards and it's an amazing space and just the community inside was fabulous to see.
The, the architecture.
It was honored to be there.
Yep, the architecture and, and design work and that is just, it's all hand done. It's absolutely incredible, absolutely incredible. I didn't, fortunately, did not go to the, uh, Public Safety Night, I went to the concert, which lo and behold, someone said, oh, yeah, this is the first one they've ever had, and yeah, no, hold on a second, timeout. It was done about 20 years ago, then it's resurrected itself and I'm glad that the young, young bucks have taken over and have taken that, uh, on, on task because it's a great night. We used to have it down at the park and the place was always packed, place was always packed.
It was tied into, uh, the summer concerts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't quite as big as what this was last night, I mean, for, for the Public Safety Night, but there was always, there was always, I mean, I remember taking my girls when they were little to get stuff and to see people.
Maybe, maybe that's something they, they want to entertain, if they want to keep it separate, they can do that as well, but it was just, it was a great night and it's, it's localized, it was right down there, you know, and there's, you know, I don't know what the parking was like, did they have enough parking up there or, because they utilized the whole parking lot with all the equipment up there. Tight, okay. Just an idea for next time around, but I'm glad it went well, I'm glad they had great weather. Our next concert is next Tuesday and, uh, we had a scheduling change, it's the Tyler Mason Trio, uh, they, uh, they're absolutely phenomenal. They're run similar to, uh, an old group of, uh, that we grew up with, well, I grew up with, I don't know, but you guys, Crosby, Stills and Nash, very similar. So if you're into that type of music and, you know, you want to put on your, your vests and tassels and, you know, headbands, be my guest, you know? It is a visual, it is a visual, it is a visual. I never wore those, but, anyway.